Okay, thank you. Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. Today is Monday, February 1st, 2021, approximately 1:02 PM. Before we have our pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask if you please rise for a brief moment of silence as we reflect back on the brave men and women in the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests around the globe, as well as the courageous men and women at Los Cruces Police Department and Los Cruces Fire Department as they keep our city safe 24/7/365. Councilor Flores, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go to the pet of the week and Jennifer Martinez from our communications office should have that.
All right. Are you able to see my screen?
Not yet.
Oh, not yet.
Mayor, while we're waiting, Councilor Bicomo's having issues getting in. Can someone let her in, please? Adrian?
I'm here, Mayor Protem. I was in the waiting room for a little while. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll continue then. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Jennifer Martinez with the city's communications office. And today I would like for you to meet Susan. Susan is a gentle girl. You can tell on the side of her face that she had a roommate that hurt her beautiful face, but she is such a sweetheart. She is potty trained and she loves to go outside on a leash. She promises to be the easiest four-legged furry friend that you've ever had. And then we have Harry. Harry is a mature guy at four years old. He loves to pose and he loves to give headbutts. And if you're not familiar with that, it means that he's marking you with his scent, which makes him feel safer around you. He really does love attention and he wants to make you happy. If you're interested in adopting at the Animal Service Center of the Mesia Valley, you can go to their website, ascmv.org/adoptions. The cost is $25. Go ahead and look for the animal that you're interested, find out what their animal number is, and then call to make an appointment to visit with your animal, 382-0018. As of right now, off-site adoption events are canceled until further notice. Now, we've heard a lot of people finding cats outside or kittens. And so here's a little reminder about what you should do if you do run into some kittens. Don't move them unless you know they are for sure in danger. Because they're alone doesn't exactly mean that they may be abandoned. Their mom may leave to go look for food for them. You can look at them from a distance for about 12 hours to see if the mom returns. And if they seem to be content, more than likely than their mom will be coming back. Again, our communications office is interested in promoting what we can do to get from red to green in the New Mexico Department of Health's Red to Green Framework. And so what we've been doing is sharing on our social media pages. I don't know if you can see on the far right here, it looks like it's cut off on my end. Some of the signs that our communications office has posted on the webpage that's located on this screen to your lower left, you can Google search "Red to Green Los Cruces" and you'll find the page right away. But what we're doing is we're asking some of our employees to go ahead and hang out with these signs for a little while, take a photo, send them to us. And we pop them up on Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook. And we hope that it helps spread the message and encourage people to go ahead and go from red to green, help promote that positivity and get us back open, our businesses open and back to being with one another. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your time. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. So now we're gonna go to either Darlene or Cindy to give the jobs of the week.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Cindy. I'm just waiting to see the slide come up.
One second, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to pull up this slide. This is Francisco Paez. Give me one second.
Take your time. I'm trying to get my other computer working here, so using this laptop. Councilor Flores did something to this computer, I know.
There we go. Wonderful. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cindy Quill and I'm the Assistant One-Stop Operator for the New Mexico Workforce. For this week, our jobs of the week, we have an internal audit manager through our city of Los Cruces, and this position will close on February 15th. We also have a marketing administrative assistant with Wisdom Tree Education. This position will be closing on February 18th. They're needing bilingual interpreters at Siricom. There's 10 positions available, and these positions will be closing February 18th. There's also a receptionist clerk position open with help, New Mexico. This position closes February 18th also. And then last, our tile installer helper with Benya's Tile Installation. This position closes on February 19th. But for a full list of jobs and internships and opportunities, you can visit our website at www-employed-new-mexico.com or www-governmentjobs.com/careers/los-cruces. And for our local office here in Los Cruces, our location is at 226 Salamita Boulevard, and our phone number is 575-524-6250. Thank you so much, everyone, and have a great afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much. Trying to get, let me just get, let me get my other computer going. Hold on one second here. Turn this one off. Sorry about that. Okay, now, let's see your proclamations. Oh, let me do this one first. So we had churches that we want to give some recognition to. Let me read this off here. First is Los Cruces First. Of course, the debt relief was the latest. I want to mention that two other churches and pastors were involved in the act of compassion between three churches. They raised $25,000 and had to ask people to stop giving because so many people wanted to help. The three churches were Los Cruces First Assembly of God Church at 5605 Batum Memorial West, and that's Pastor Dave Vistein. Other churches were Heart of the World Church at 1605 South Valley, Pastor Dale Walker, and then church in El Paso that also participated was Pastor TJ Terrazas of Hope City Community Church. So some of the things that they were doing in the community, they helped 200 homeless teenagers monthly with clothes and supplies each month in conjunction with the Los Cruces Public Schools. They serve about 150 people every month with food and supplies through their food distribution program called Bread of Life Ministries. During the pandemic, they were involved with other churches giving out fresh fruits and vegetables to families in need. They've been involved with SOLES, S-O-U-L-S, for souls, in providing shoes for needy students in local elementary schools. They do a backpack giveaway each year for school students, giving over 1,000 backpacks to needy families through Los Cruces First and the LCF Landmark Campus. They've helped a number of people in the congregation with utility bills and other pressing needs. They support local ministries and organizations in the city like Turning Point Pregnancy, Care Net Pregnancy and Gospel Rescue Mission, Doñana Detention Center Chaplains. They've been involved in Angel Tree Program and ministering those incarcerated in local detention centers. They've also partnered with churches in the area to bring the Convoy of Hope, which you all recall. Last time it was over a million dollars' worth of services to the citizens of Los Cruces and Doñana County. So it's just incredible here. Heart of the World Church has a food pantry that they open up for food distribution for those who can just drive through and pick up food. The Hope Community Church also supports other nonprofit ministries as well. The list just goes on and on. They have a feeding program that they provide meals for children and families in Juarez, Mexico, and they partnered with the Segundo Barrio Apero and provided 100 backpacks and supplies for those children there in Juarez. So I have these certificates here. Certificate of Appreciation to Pastor David Vistein, Los Cruces First Assembly of God. It's here. Also have another one for Mayor's Certificate of Appreciation to Pastor Dale Walker of the Heart for the World Church. And let's see what else. To Pastor TJ Terrazas of the Hope City Community Church. So, gentlemen, if you are watching, thank you so much for all that you do for the community. It's incredible. I mean, a lot of times our faith-based organizations, they do so much, and we don't have a chance to really recognize them. So this is a nice opportunity to tell you thanks. And so if you're watching and you wanted to say a couple of words, feel free to jump in, raise your hand, or just come on to the meeting.
Mayor Ken, it's been a privilege to serve in our community for over the last 27 years.
And it's joy. Can I have you just state your name? I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, Pastor Dave Vistein in Los Cruces First Assembly of God. And Pastor Dale Walker's on at Heart for the World. And we're really excited this past December, between the three churches, as we mentioned, raised $25,000, $24,000, canceled $2.4 million worth of hospital debt, and affected 1,400 families in our area. And the debt was about $1,700 per family that was taken away off the books for them. So Pastor Dale was one of the guys that helped mastermind this and had the connections, and we all joined together and just a joy to be able to help our community and to make a difference. And so Dale, if you want to say anything, I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for your recognition, and we pray for you guys, and we want to be good citizens of our community.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Hello, this is Dale Walker, and I just also want to thank you very much for the recognition. And I just want to mention a beautiful thing. Starting this week on Wednesdays, we're receiving trucks from something that's been provided with over 1,800 boxes of food for families. There's about 10 different organizations that'll be distributing it Wednesday morning. Anyhow, just wanting to let people know, if you know organizations that need boxes of food to give out, let us know and we can get you some of those boxes of food.
Thank you so much, Pastor. We appreciate that very much, both of you gentlemen, and also Pastor Terrazas as well. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for making Los Cruces and Doñana County the great communities that we are. It's people like you and your congregations that really go and help those in need. Thank you very much. Okay, so next. I read this. Three off-duty Los Cruces police officers are credited with going above and beyond the call of duty when they stopped to help an El Paso motorist whose pickup burst into flames on Interstate 10. About 5:30 PM Wednesday, January 13th, an El Paso motorist was driving east on I-10 when a tire on his pickup experienced a blowout. The driver safely pulled over to the median before his pickup caught fire. Los Cruces Police Officers Tony Bowman, Jose Prado, and Jos Herrera, who all reside in El Paso County, worked a day shift Wednesday and were heading home along I-10 in separate vehicles when they came across the fire near mile marker 162. All three officers stopped to offer their assistance. Officers Bowman and Prado made contact with the motorist and offered their direct assistance. Officer Herrera stopped his vehicle well behind the scene to divert traffic from the fire. The motorist called Los Cruces Police on Thursday to extend his gratitude for the assistance he received from the officers. The motorist was also appreciative because Officer Bowman stayed with him for about two hours until the New Mexico State Police cleared the scene. Bowman then provided the El Paso man with a ride home. The Los Cruces Police Department employs several officers who reside in El Paso or El Paso County. And so I have for, this is, each one's gonna get one of these certificates. Says it's a mayor citation for community service, presented to Tony L. Bowman, Los Cruces Police Department, in recognition of your service to the community for going above and beyond the call of duty in a life-saving situation. Dated this first day of February 2021, signed by myself. So, gentlemen, Tony Bowman, Jose Prado, and Jos Herrera, we each have one of these for you. And I'll be dropping them back off to City Hall and have the chief or someone pick them up and have them deliver them to you as well. If any of you are on the call or on the meeting, you're welcome to say a couple of words if you'd like. And just identify yourself, please.
This is Officer Bowman. I'd just like to thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Jose Prado, thank you, Mayor, for everything you guys do and the community especially.
So how can we get you guys to live in Los Cruces? You want us to just find you guys a house or something? Pay you a little bit more money, or I don't know what, but we gotta figure that out. So, but, gentlemen, thank you, really.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Extremely proud of you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next is a proclamation, National Gun Violence Survivor Week, and presented to Earl Neeson and Councilor Flores asked if I would do that. So, and I saw Dr. Neeson with us. You know, you sent me an email earlier over the weekend, Dr. Neeson, and I can't believe that your age. I always thought you were, I don't know, in your mid-70s, early, late 70s, or whatever. Wow, you look great for your age. I won't say your age, because, but anyways, I'm proud to know you. So this proclamation is the National Gun Violence Survivor Week, dated today, February 1st, 2021, presented to Earl Neeson, Dr. Earl Neeson. Whereas every year nearly 39,000 Americans are killed in acts of gun violence and nearly 85,000 more are shot and wounded. Whereas by early February, more Americans are killed with guns than are killed in our peer countries in an entire calendar year. Whereas a gun violence survivor is anyone who has personally experienced gun violence, whether you have witnessed an act of gun violence, been threatened or wounded with a gun, or had someone you know and cared for wounded or killed. Whereas forms of gun violence can include, but not limited to, gun suicides, gun homicides, domestic violence involving a gun, shootings by law enforcement, and unintentional shootings. Whereas 58% of American adults, including 68% of Black and Latino Americans or someone that they care for, has experienced gun violence in their lifetime, demonstrating the reach and impact gun violence has in communities across America. Whereas firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens. Whereas Americans in cities across the nation are working to end the senseless violence by advocating for common sense gun safety legislation. Whereas by commemorating National Gun Violence Survivors Week on February 1st to February 7th, cities across America will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives stolen by gun violence. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our community safe. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council, the city of Los Cruces, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim the week of February 1st through the 7th, 2021, as National Gun Violence Survivors Week and encourage all citizens to support their community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value all human lives. So, Dr. Neeson, you're welcome to say a couple of words if you'd like.
Well, Mayor, thank you for making this into a proclamation. I'm representing the Moms Demand Answers Organization. It's headquartered right now in Albuquerque. And we wanted to take this week to particularly recognize New Mexicans who have been victims of gun violence and survived, but we also want to pay recognition to all of the families that lost someone due to gun violence. We hear all the horror stories about, for example, all the way from the Parkland kids all the way to some four-year-old who picked up a gun at home and played with it and it was loaded and shot somebody. When I was teaching at the university, I always asked during the year somehow, how many of you have guns in the homes? Over half of the hands would go up, and it was one girl sitting right in front. I remember her saying she had a three- or four-year-old brother. And I said, "How many guns do you have in your house?" And she said, "Eight." And every one of us knows where they are. And I reminded her, I said, "I think you said you had a four-year-old." "Yeah, but he knows how to handle it, too." I couldn't believe people with that kind of looseness of the guns hanging around in their houses. And those guns are making some of those victims. And we are looking at some legislation that's before the legislature right now, and we are going to be advocating all week by meeting with those legislators. We've got one. We're particularly concerned about the ghost guns. I don't know if you have been into that, but where we can get these parts and put together at home and they have no serial numbers and there's no control of them, and that is a big worry. I have a couple of police friends and they are very worried about those types of weapons. So we have a House bill that will address that, and we are helping sponsor or helping push that in the state. So anyhow, thank you again for recognizing these people. I'm sure I can't even think of the numbers we have in New Mexico. I don't think anybody has kept track of that, but we all probably can relay different kinds of stories about people surviving gun violence. So again, Mayor, I appreciate you doing it, and I'll relay this on to the organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Neeson, and thank you for all the work that you do on your other work around the community. You, I think, personally helped spearhead the reduction in teen pregnancies, and can't thank you enough for that. Okay, so next.
That was a 14-year venture. By getting school-based health centers established, we reduced the teen pregnancy rate by 65, close to 70% in four years. So that was, that was very helpful to the girls who graduated instead of being pregnant.
Yes, sir. Okay, so now we have interim fire chief Jason Smith, who would like to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Interim Fire Chief Jason Smith. Today, we're going to be presenting some information about Battalion Chief Michael Daniels. He's completed his executive fire officer program through the U.S. Fire Administration. So the EFO program at U.S. Fire Administration, it's the flagship program of the NFA, the National Fire Academy. It's a four-year program, and it requires multiple applied research papers. Mike, completing the course, had two perfect 4.0 papers, and one was selected as an outstanding applied research paper for the year. And I hope this will work here, but internally, we prepared a little video for Mike in congratulating him. And I also received some videos from city administration that we've put into another video for Mike. And I also received some videos from city administration that we've put into another video for Mike. So. As a member of this organization, it's good to see him, uh, setting an example for the rest of us brothers and sisters and what we can accomplish. So congratulations to you, Chief, and, uh, best of luck moving forward. Thank you.
Hey, Mike, I just want to say congratulations on, uh, getting your EFO. I know that it's been a long process. Uh, a lot of hard work and dedication that you've put into, to gaining that. So I just want to say congratulations on, uh, completing that program and, and graduating.
Mike, congratulations. It was quite accomplishment. Really proud of you. You make us look good as you're looking good.
Congrats, Chief.
Congratulations, Chief, on getting your EFO. Good job.
Congrats, Chief.
Congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations, sir.
Congrats, Chief.
So you can see with Mike, he's, he's very well-loved and very well-respected in our organization. Uh, he always works hard. I think he was close to completing the EFO program at record time, uh, but it was just slowed down because of the pandemic. Uh, but thank you for this chance to, to recognize Battalion Chief Michael Daniels.
So Chief, is, uh, is, uh, B.C. Daniels on the, on the Zoom? Would he like to say a couple of words?
I believe he is on. I think they just got back from a, a multi-unit response. And so I don't know if, uh, Mike, are you available, sir?
Sorry, um, yes, I am, sir. Uh, sorry, let me, let me get my radio turned down. No, I, I, to everybody, I appreciate it. Uh, there's several names on here, uh, you know, Chief Smith, Chief Enriquez. Uh, I appreciate everybody's support and willingness to help out. Um, my, the, the whole intent of the program is to identify problems in the, in our local community. Um, and address them through applied research and, and, and not, you know, willy-nilly just shooting things at the wall and hoping they stick. It's really trying to dive down and, and, and look at problems facing our community and finding creative ways to, to address them. So I do appreciate all the support from everybody. Um, been in my interactions with, uh, staff and council members. Always been very supportive. So, uh, thank you for all the support from the city. Uh, hopefully, hopefully it gets put to good use.
Thank you, Battalion Chief Daniels. Uh, anytime you have a chance to invest in yourself and, and make yourself that much better. Makes the, not only the, uh, Las Cruces Fire Department better, but also the city of Las Cruces better. So we're very proud of you. I know it was a very challenging course, four years. That's a, that's a lot of, that's a long time. But nonetheless, it's over. I presume it's over, right? You got your certificate. I saw that the other day. I had, I was on three meetings, but I did get a chance to see that. So that's good. Congratulations. Very proud of you. Okay, great. So now we're going to go ahead and, uh, I'm going to read the conflict of interest statement. Uh, this is where I'll ask if any member of the city council, city manager, or any member of the city staff has any known conflict of interest on any item on the agenda.
None.
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 Mayor, um, I have a perceived conflict and 6.1, um, the COO, Jaleen Martinez, is a personal friend of mine. And so I don't want there to be a feeling of conflict as I, um, move to consent to approving, um, this item.
Okay, I think that'll be fine. Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. Okay, so I have a few, uh, letters I'd like to read, um, public comment. So the first one is, well, just, okay, this one here was just recently. I know we had one from the week before. This one's from Greg Gregory Shervanik, for the record. Uh, says right here, "Thank you for accepting my question. You have just heard a presentation on the water, wastewater development fees at Monday's city council meeting vote to accept. Resolution 21-025 was taken and passed resolution council bill number 21-025, ordinance number 2958. An ordinance repealing and replacing Division 17 Building Standards of Chapter 30 Buildings and Building Regulations of the Las Cruces Municipal Code to adopt 2018 International Energy Conservation Code as amended and as adopted by the state of New Mexico, um, Construction Industries, ordinance number 2958. Based on the new cost of construction of the exterior envelope of any building to meet with this new energy code, there will be a substantial increase in both builder and owner. Although there is a cost split between the builder and owner, in the end, the owner will bear the cost. When this item is voted on, maybe it is necessary to estimate how much this new cost will determine the changes to the requested fee split. Thank you." Okay, and then I have another one from Lydia Gallegos. This was to, uh, Ms. Rogers. The purpose of this email is to convey my concern for the zone change proposed for this property. Uh, this is regarding an item that we have on the agenda, 401 North Campo. My thoughts are whether this zone change and the proposed commercial business center will be of any benefit to the families that live in the Mesquite Historical District. It is my understanding that the owner believes that the professionals that rent office space would be accountants, attorneys, physicians, et cetera. While this is a nice list of professionals, would these benefit the neighborhood? Question mark? I don't know that there is a need for such services in the neighborhood or if residents could afford this type of professional. I have lived across this property for over a year. The empty lot is nothing that adds to the neighborhood, but it does, does not distract from the neighborhood. Other small businesses are along Campo Street, but those use the current building structures that have been in place for close to 100 years or more. I was born a few blocks from my current home, so I am familiar with the neighborhood and I'm proud to say that I've returned to my roots. The traffic that will result as people get to the corner of Campo and Hadley to park in the rear of the building is a worry for me. The exit onto Court Avenue, which is a one-way street heading east, will also cause traffic patterns that may cause worry or worse as people hurry to leave work. Progress is inevitable, but it is this progress to change the zoning from residential to commercial in this neighborhood that has been declared, that has been declared a historical district. People who are not connected by family or live in this area may only see old homes. But this is a view from the outside. My home was built in 1930. And when I walked into this house with my realtor, I immediately felt it was home and not an empty house. I do not believe the zone change should pass. While we get notices in the mail about meetings to decide what occurs in our neighborhood, not everybody that lives nearby have the capacity or ability to use computers to attend meetings or simply are not available to do so. I hope all comments and concerns will be taken into consideration. However, I'm old enough and wise enough to know that many things are decided before the public is made aware. Thank you for your time, Lydia Gallegos, 317 East Hadley Avenue. Okay, um, here's another one from Mr. Shervanik. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, EFO, Pili. For the record, Gregory Shervanik. During a 2018 city council meeting, I addressed my concerns about the extreme lack of transparency by the city. Remember, Mr. Mayor, former city manager, Ead, was seated to your left. Two years later and after an 11-month forensic investigation and the settlement of multiple lawsuits with past city employees, I reiterate that the city lacks transparency and new minor changes by this, by this new administration reflect more hurdles to transparency. In 2019, the city made changes to viewing IPR requests by eliminating the ability to review IPR requests as they were filed in real time. The council also allowed and accepted the city's accounting methodology to change from cash to accrual and the combination of accounts under new file names. This was never clearly explained publicly, and when a senior counselor commented, it was requested by staff that his concerns would be addressed privately. Surveys become the primary means of accessing the public's feelings on city-driven projects. I informed city staff and city manager that these surveys had no safeguards to curb abuse and would allow survey takers to game the data collected by entering multiple times and that entries were being made by underage individuals. Calling into question the efficacy of survey data used when spending millions of dollars of public funds and changing public policy. After a review of the surveys, the city has administered and created, including Apodaca Blueprint Elevate Las Cruces, Consolidated Plan 2021, Heat Survey, and more, most recently, the Strategic Community Survey. There have been no changes to safeguard the data collected from being tainted or manipulated. 70-plus percent of the questions used by city surveys are repetitive, common, sensible, and anecdotal. I confirming that methodology used is a confirmed bias type of research. Establishing a particular hypothesis shaped to determine a predetermined value or data. If the values collected by the survey do not support the researcher's hypothesis, in this case, the city is the researcher. It is eliminated and only data that does fit the hypothesis is included in the conclusion. Friday at a special work session, data will be presented that was collected by just survey. The information was collected on a limited 10 open survey with 10 questions using the methodology described above. The objective is to integrate more confirmed bias data collected for Elevate Las Cruces to change the strategic plan that is in place now and does not end until 2022. During the first city council meeting of the year 2021, you voted to allow the destruction of documents and files deemed not necessary by the city's authority of home rule. Since no one asked, I will. Did you keep a list of those documents? If not, why not? Since it was a topic of discussion recently, and who makes the decision? And are there parameters in making this judgment? After activating the temporary transparency button on the city's website and clicking on the surveys in the side window, I did not find any of the most recent surveys used by the city. Cordially, Gregory Shervanik. So, um, I'm going to get Christine in a minute. She wants to address, uh, the, the, the files, the destruction of the documents. But Counselor Sorg, did you have your, did you have a question?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm going to request to read an email I just got this morning that I forwarded on to you and Christine. Uh, it happens to be a constituent of mine, but it concerns the city as a whole, uh, and, uh, small businesses during this COVID-19 pandemic. Um, may I or you please read this email?
Oh, I'll let you read it. Can I, let me finish this, this, uh,
Of course.
real quick.
Of course.
I'll, I'll get to a couple of these and then I'll let Christine answer that other one. So regarding the, uh, changes from cash to accrual, uh, that was actually something there that the, um, gap where general accounting principles made the cities, not just our city, but all cities have to change, uh, that particular setup. So that's something there that, you know, we, we didn't do it individually. Uh, Christine, did you, and I think you talked about this before, but did you want to talk a little bit about the destruction of documents? Um, and, and I guess the question was, do you keep even just a list of the documents that were destroyed?
Yes, Mayor, I'll speak to that. Um, in the resolution that was passed in January, the exhibit attached to it is a list of all the documents that are being destroyed. It's pretty comprehensive. It includes the department in which the records are, um, found. It includes where the documents are located currently. So if they're, um, at the record center, if they're in somebody's department, um, Laserfish, we include that. We also include, we also include where on the retention schedule those documents, um, meet retention, um, a description of the documents, and also the years of the documents that were created. And I apologize for my dog.
Oh, that's okay. Nice. Okay, well, thank you for that, uh, response. And Counselor Sorg, you want to read that other letter that you've got?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It begins, "My name is Rodolfo Garcia. I have been the general manager at the Golden Corral location for five years, and I have worked there for more than 15 years. During this pandemic, Golden Corral considered shutting down our location. I immediately began to inquire about how I can franchise the location. Because it did not, I did not want my employees to go without a job when New Mexico would open back up. My employees are happy and grateful when they were, when we opened at the 25% to get their lives back on track and provide for their families, even with the restrictions that were, were added. After a second shutdown, I am struggling more and have cut down 95% of my staff. Golden Corral is not known for curbside or delivery options. So I am trying my best to advertise more and get creative with specials and such. I have even reached out and applied for grants and the PPP loan. I have been declined by all because I took over ownership in September 2020 instead of January 2020, if you recall that, uh, requirement of ownership. Personally, I am out of funds and I doubt anyone will invest in my business the way things are going. Something has to happen fast or we will continue to disappear as a small business like so many have, has to shut their doors already. The Golden Corral name can carry a lot of benefit, benefiting factors to attract customers, but it can also be a burden in ways that restrict the community to use us as a local family-owned small business." So he says, "Mr. Sorg, I am asking for some type of assistance, any assistance. My employees deserve to have a place to come back to. This community deserves to have the Golden Corral." And, uh, "We not only help the community, we help disabled veterans and their families with DAV fundraising and Camp Corral." And he goes on to say, "Please let us know what is out there." Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Wonder why he hasn't applied to our, um, thing at, um, or funding at Families and Youth. Oh, well.
Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Bencomo?
I've connected that gentleman to our Economic Development Department, um, as well. So he's been in, you know, I think, I'm not just trying to dismiss how frustrating this situation is by any means, but, um, you know, I, I know Dr. Martinez has talked to him directly.
Good. Well, I appreciate it.
Okay, good. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go to acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Got, I.
But that's okay. Hold on a second. Motion made by Counselor Florida, second by Counselor Vazquez. Okay, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Sorry, Mayor. I hate to do this, but I have questions on, um, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4. Um, and so I, I want to pull them. Sorry.
Um, Counselor Florida and Counselor Vazquez, is that okay to include that in your motion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved and second to approve the resolution with items 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4 removed for discussion. Christine?
This is on the motion to approve the agenda as presented with the removal of items 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4 for discussion. Counselor Betis Duvie?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so we approved one item on the consent. That's good. So let's go to 6.2. Uh, Resolution 21-113. Need a motion?
I approve.
Second, Gandara.
Motion made by Counselor Sorg, second by Mayor Protem. Gandara. And, uh, Mayor Protem, did you have a, a question or did you want a full, um, presentation?
No, Mayor, I ju, I just have a question. Um, through my,
Um, through my, um, reading the nine hundred-plus documents that were given to us. Um, this Mesia Valley Community of Hope, I noticed that the. That the contracts that were associated with the particular resolution were old contracts. I didn't, from twenty fifteen, I believe, I didn't see a current draft of a contract. What it would look like, um, here, and I, is that normal? Or am I? Should I be worried about that? I, I was just worried that I didn't see any new contracts with new dates. And I realize they're waiting, um, to, um, have council approve. But, um, I don't feel that it's helpful. There, everybody. I mean, it's helpful to give context, absolutely, but, um. How does that work? And would we ever see a draft contract?
So let's see, either Amy or Erin?
Yes, uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Amy Johnson Basford, Grants Administrator. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and Counselor, uh, Gandra. The agreement that, uh, is attached is the agreement for the entire campus that is made with. Uh, the parent organization, Mesia Valley Community of Hope. It is a five-year contract with a five-year renewal. Um, Mesia Valley Community of Hope, uh, used their option to renew, um, during the last year. Uh, they do that through, um. The, uh, leasing office in Economic Development, our land office in Economic Development. Uh, and so they have renewed that lease for five years. So that lease will not change again until that five-year period is over. And then, yes, we do bring all of these leases to council for approval, uh, when a new lease is created. Does that answer your question, I hope?
It does. I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. Thank you, Amy, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Protem, thanks for picking that up. And being safe. So it's good. Okay, so if there's no other further questions, uh, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash one, one, three. Counselor Betis Juvi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandera?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, item six point three, Resolution twenty-one dash one fourteen. Need a motion.
Move to approve.
Second, Gandera.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Sorg, second by Mayor Protem. And Mayor Protem, did you have a question, or did you want a full presentation on this?
Yes, Mayor, I do, I have a question. I was just concerned of the increase from the two hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand. The resolution wasn't clear in terms of specifics. It just said, you know, just there would, I guess, been additional work. I just want to understand that, um, more thoroughly as to why that hu- that huge jump in, in the cost.
Okay, so I think Alex Liu, are you on the call? Or in the meeting?
Yes, Mayor. Hi, my name is junior Alex Liu, who's with the purchasing section. I may have to defer this question to the end user department, but, uh. It is for raw constructional materials. Uh, it was, uh, invitation to bid, uh, nineteen twenty zero, uh, eight, seven. Uh, it was awarded to two local, uh, companies, GCC, Sound City Materials of, uh, Las Cruces. Mesia Valley Concrete and Material of Donaiana County. Um, the original estimation from the end user department was five hundred thousand dollars combined. Uh, due to the increased usage of, uh, previous year. The original, uh, awarded amount will not satisfy the, uh, the need of the city. I think it was a increase of, uh, the, um. The amount of project we had been done under the material. But I'll defer to the end user department to talk more about the background.
Thank you, Alex, thank you.
So would that be David Saviro or Tony Trevino?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protem, David Saviro, Public Works Director. And Mayor Protem, Alex Liu is correct. This original agreement was approved in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. The increase being asked for is two hundred thousand dollars to finish, to finish out the, the remainder of the fiscal year.
I confused it, okay.
So the, the purpose of the increase is we've experienced as an organization. A large amount of utility cuts. So with that, and the materials needed to patch those things back in our roadways. We've seen a great increase from, from past years. So with that, we've gotten to the point that we're. Up close, up against that five hundred thousand dollar amount. And we are going to need this estimated amount to cover what we're estimating based on what has occurred up to this fiscal year. So that includes asphalt for, for those patches. And also some concrete to address any sidewalk repairs that we may need from those utility repairs as well, too.
Thanks, David. I have a couple of, 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 um, um, questions to follow that, Mayor, if I may?
Sure, of course.
Um, so, David. It, has it been customary standard? We've had two, um, outfits providing that service in the past, yes?
Mayor, Mayor Protem. In the past, those services were. Sent out to a vendor. However, based on the cost. For those services. Uh, if I remember correctly, were nearly double than what we were used to. So we brought those services back into the organization. And have worked between Public Works and Utilities to take care of those repairs internally.
So Dave, thank you, David. Um, David, so, uh, so, and unanticipated, I guess. Utilities, I'm thinking, um, you're probably in the older, original townsite, older parts where the GEI. The GPS or GIS system, you know, I know that as we're moving through, um. We, and moving into being documenting where those utilities are, I would imagine that was part of the issue. Am I correct in my assumption?
Mayor, Mayor Protem. Public Works is not the collector of that data as Utilities is. And I would have to defer that to Utilities based on. Cause if I understand your question correctly, you're asking for GIS. Analysis or collection of data based on those utility breaks.
Well, you would know, right? If you've identified them through G, the GEIS system. But I'm saying, and what I know from the past is we didn't have that yet, and we were unfamiliar, especially. In the older part of town where that might lie, right? Undergr- all the utilities underground, that kind of thing. Is that part of the reason for that increase?
Mayor, Mayor Protem. Uh, I don't think that has a direct correlation. This is just addressing the work that has occurred where there has been an interruption of utility services with either a leak. A main break or whatever the, the issue may be.
Okay.
Information is being collected through GIS.
Okay, thank you, David. Thank you, Mayor, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you, thanks, David. Uh, if there's nothing further, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash one, one, four. Counselor Betis Juvi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandera?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, uh, six point four, Council Bill twenty-one dash zero two six, ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-nine.
Move to approve.
Second, Gandera.
Motion made by Counselor Sorg, second by Mayor Protem Gandera. And. Mayor Protem, did you have a question, or did you want a full presentation?
No, Mayor, I think this one needs a full presentation, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so Catherine Harrison Rogers?
Yeah?
Let me open this up for everyone. Can you see that, Mr. Mayor, members of the city?
Right.
Back to the beginning, and somehow it started in the middle of the presentation. My apologies. Alrighty, so. Again, this is Catherine Harrison Rogers with City Staff. This particular project is a zone change at four ten Campo. Uh, currently, the property is zoned R three, which is a high-density residential district. It consists of about a half an acre. It's adjacent to the downtown area. It's located on the east side of Campo between Hadley and Court Avenue. It's essentially that entire, uh, front of that block. Uh, it should be noted that this is one property. However, our mapping system does reflect it as several pieces. That has been replatted, it's just not being reflected in our current maps. This is part of the South Mesquite overlay, and it's part of the original townsite. Um, it's currently vacant on the north portion. There is a single-family residence in, in poor condition, as well as an accessory building that was built in nineteen twenty. Uh, during the last survey of this area, uh, for historic purposes. It was deemed to be non-contributing, and that's primarily has to do with the fact that, that it's in such bad condition. And has been added on to so many times. The property is, you can see, uh, as I had indicated, is actually only one property, not four, as is shown on the map. Uh, you have Hadley to the north and Court on the south. Again, an aerial of that, you can see that the majority is vacant on the north side. And there is the small structures towards the south. Which is the Court Avenue side. Again, here are the structures, here are some pictures, so you can get a, a, basically a visual about the condition of those.
Excuse me, Catherine, I'm sorry for interrupting. Can you go back to the last picture, just in case, uh, members of the public or our council wants to just show its proximity? It's literally across the street from us. Are you sure where City Hall is?
So City Hall is. Excuse me. City Hall is just sort of catty corner, we're up over in this corner. I don't know if you can see my cursor. And this is a big public lot across the street.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And of course, here are the buildings. If you've driven by, uh, you know that that back wall, um, along Campo is essentially disintegrating. Uh, it's in pretty poor condition. And again, this is looking south on that vacant piece. Um, sort of to the. The right, um, in this photo, and a little bit further back on Campo is where City Hall is. Um, essentially, what they're, they're proposing to do is, is to try to develop that piece of property. The R three zone, the way it is currently, does allow for some commercial uses as being proposed. However, it's limited to only thirty-five percent of the site. So they would like to rezone it to C two. Uh, which is a South Mesquite zone. It basically is a general commercial zone. They want to redevelop this property as a business center. They want to demolish those unstable businesses, I mean, excuse me, those unstable buildings. And then they have discussed a possible retention of the oldest portion. Uh, of one of those structures and incorporating it into the new development. Um, however, that's going to be dependent upon, um, the, the studies having to do with engineering and, and the structural. Uh, foundation of that particular building. Um, that future development map with Elevate Las Cruces also considers this urban neighborhood. These types of uses would fit in. Here is essentially a layout of what's being proposed. Uh, a number of suites. Fronting Campo, that would be, uh, along here as my cursor points to this. And then, of course, um, the parking in the rear. Again, here's some elevations, just to get you a sense of what that might look like in the future if it's constructed. Now, this did go before the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, for their input. That was back in September. They did review the development plans, uh, for the site construction as well as the zone change. And they did recommend approval of both the site development and the zone change moving forward. We did not receive any public input until this morning. And of course, Mr. Mayor, you did read that letter out loud. Um, during review by staff, no issues were identified in terms of. Of, uh, any traffic, um, or engineering problems, or anything else of that nature. This, of course, did go to Planning and Zoning Commission for their review, and that was October twenty-fourth. Should be noted, the original meeting was in October, however, that was canceled due to inclement weather. Uh, and, and issues associated with that and our ability to get, um, quorum on that day. So it did go to November. It was placed upon the consent agenda, there was no discussion at the time, and it was recommended for unanimous approval. There are several findings for approval. Of course, those are listed in the report that was provided to you, um, as part of your packet. And today, your options are to vote yes to approve, vote no to deny, yes with conditions, or vote to table. I would like to point out that the applicant's architect is available to answer any questions. And also has a presentation if you're interested, um, in viewing that as well. Nice to answer any questions.
Thank you, Catherine. Counselor Bencomo?
Can we have the map shown on the screen while we're talking about it?
And I would like the architecture presentation.
And I don't mind if Mayor Protem goes first and she pulled. The item. I can go after her.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and have the presentation by the. Architect, and then if there's any questions.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I'm Jason Clark with Studio of the Architects, uh, hopefully you can help, uh, hear me.
Yes.
Um, Sharon, uh, I can share my screen, I guess? No, Catherine, I'm sorry. Uh, let's see here. So it's a very similar, uh, presentation to what you just saw. This one was just a little more current. This is the, um, documentation that we went through with the, um, Historic Preservation Committee. And I apologize upfront if you hear something going on. I have an eight-week-old puppy running around my feet as we speak, so it could get interesting. So. So this, this maybe helps a little bit more with, uh, the site location. This is a Google map. Um, basically, what we're trying to do here is. Put it, uh, a zoning on this piece of property that is, is really kind of consistent with what's going on on Campo Street. Um, looking for small businesses. The C two gives us a lot of flexibility with offices, small retail. Um, just a, a lot more opportunity to create something that has. Um, a larger potential to be full, to be full. Uh, the last thing we want to do is create another building that's empty. Um, so, um, as Catherine mentioned, we're looking at creating, uh, four different suites. Um, the site is very, very narrow and difficult to develop. Um, the main focus here is to create, um, new development along Campo Street. Put the parking in the back so that we continue our kind of pedestrian-oriented, uh, walking nature of the neighborhood. Um. We do have a one-way drive in the back due, due to constraints of the site. Um, so you would enter from the north and exit to the south. Um, we talked about, um. The potential to save a portion of the building. And so the, the existing structure that we would look at is the very corner piece. And basically, what we told the Historic Preservation Committee was that once we had a contractor on site. And we started site development, and we started peeling away the pieces in additions to that building, that we would evaluate the actual piece of the building that is. Does have some historical, um, significance. And if it's something that we can save, then we would incorporate it into that building number four. Um, but we won't really know that until we have, um, a contractor on site and start taking down some of the stuff that's around it. Uh, once again, um, so we, this whole design was done with the, um, Mesquite Overlay District Designing, Design Codes and Regulations. So we're limited to a fourteen-foot elevation height, so that we're, so we're meeting all of those, uh, requirements. Um, once again, trying to create some, some interest with the building. Um, each, each of the suites has a courtyard entry, uh, so there's an outdoor patio off of the street. Uh, so just trying to create something that, that gives a little bit of vibrance and, and allows people to walk and explore, uh, both the inside and outside. Um, this is looking north from, from the corner on the south side of the site. Uh, looking back towards the south. Of course, my puppy's been sleeping the whole time, and now it's to go outside. I'm going to grab him and bring him up here. Um, okay, um. Just a few more images. This is the backside of the property where I have the parking. And just kind of an overall, overall aerial of the site. So I'm, can answer any questions you might have. Um, like I said, really, the, the owner of this property has looked at a bunch of different ways to develop this one. Uh, they finally came to us and said, "You guys need to step way back from what you're trying to do because way too high density, it's never going to get approved." And so we toned it way down, uh, to the four suites. Um, right around forty-five hundred square feet of total development, so that we could have a reasonable parking ratio with the, with the whole site.
I'm impressed, it looks really nice.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, well, I, I'm actually looking at maybe going into suite three, we'll see. Um, um, the building I was in got sold, so we're all working at home right now, so. I have my eyes on that one a little bit.
Yeah, weren't you guys located off of Roadrunner Parkway?
No, we're down there in the Beasley Mitchell Building. Um, yeah, we've been there forever, and, uh, my old partner, Ron, who retired. Uh, finally got his, uh, wish and sold the building to, uh, to Beasley Mitchell there, so they could expand, so. It kicked me out.
Okay, so, uh, Mayor Protem, were you?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Clark, Catherine, for your presentation. I really appreciate it. And reading all the documents and the commission's feedback and P and Z. I mean, I was struck by by a few things and 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 one is, you know, with all due respect, when you read staff's notes, some of this information I would have appreciated seeing in there. You know, you really have to get into all the documents to really pick out the concern about the historical significance, what you're thinking. And and so I know, Mr. Clark, you were at that commission meeting, you know, very clear, very like, let, you know, let me, let me see if I have heard you correctly. And, you know, step by step, you talked about, so this is pending by planning and zoning approval of, you know, the C two, once that approval, I can submit for permit and begin construction on A, B, and C. And at that time, as the selective demolition occurs to the historic portion, is when you would be able to get a better idea of whether it's salvageable or not. And so that definitely was, it it felt like everybody on the commission approved that based on those that that feedback from everybody. But then it got on the consent agenda for planning and zoning, and then it comes to us. So I I I want to be sure that that there's conditions on this. And I appreciate the 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 development there, it would go a long way with from a vacant position, vacant property per se with just that other piece. And then, given what the commission was talking about, there's some historic significance going back to the eighteen eighties. And although they've made quote-unquote improvements nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties, you're not really getting into, being able, and I appreciated the willingness, Mr. Clark. So I'm a little concerned about this, I felt a little like P and Z should have had some conditions on there, they did not. And I am I'm really concerned as as it's coming to us without those conditions. And again, please don't misunderstand me, I am ecstatic about this development. But I do want to hold true to the historic preservation and that that rel- and and I and I read all the the notes and whatnot, so are you amenable to having those conditions, Mr. Clark?
Mayor, Mayor Protam, so you you are very correct, so we had a very long meeting with Historic Preservation Committee. And when we got to the end, I wanted to make sure, because we went round in circles and there was a lot of comments, it was all, it was a very good meeting. But yes, I so I went through step by step of what I thought that I had heard and what everybody had agreed to. So, no, I don't, I don't have any, I I think the the hard part about this is, is that the the condition that I believe was agreed to was, we would all, once we're able to look at that building, that we would get city staff, that would be Troy and potentially Larry Nichols, to go look at it with us. I've been in the structure, there's not much historic left of it, unfortunately. It's been modified many, many times on the inside as well as the outside. And so, yeah, I I think that, I think everybody in the Historic Preservation Committee meeting was very reasonable. And it wasn't, it wasn't something they could say, you have to use it. Once again, the study that Catherine mentioned has found the structure is nonnon-contributing because of what's happened to it over the years. So our original intent was to demolish it. So we did make that that compromise in the in the committee meeting, I felt like it was a fair one, that let's see what we can find, and if it's worth keeping, then we would do so, so. Unfortunately, it wasn't a yes or no situation.
Right, no, I understand, Mr. Clark, I appreciate the transparency and the willingness to work through that and understanding, you know, what that thought process was and having those, you know, quote-unquote, conditions, that agreement that Troy would be out there with your engineer and 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 really look through that. So I I just want to make sure that that is is warranted, and I feel that it needs to be said in these documents, and it it wasn't. And so I don't know how to correct that, Mayor, other than placing that kind of condition in writing. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so Counselor Ben Como.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Protam, for those great questions. Thanks Catherine and Mr. Clark for being on on here with us to answer questions, that's always super helpful. Yeah, I mean, I think this looks great, and I mean, I think it's a gray area to to be developed, certainly. I mean, right up or down, I guess, Las Cruces and Campo, there's a very similar sort of building like this, right, this long building with many different businesses. And and so I love that you're sort of following some of that architecture and making sure that the parking lot is in the back and preserving some of that, so I think that's really great. I do, though, you know, when I read this email, I think it is important to note that while I was reading it, I was trying to read between the lines, and I think the concern is gentrification, right? What happens to long-term residents, what happens to senior residents when we start building perhaps more luxury, higher-end type of development in communities that are not that, right? That are perhaps more working-class families in low-income neighborhoods. And so this question is definitely for City, and it's an issue I raised in the El Paso Solano Ad-Hoc Committee about strategies to mitigate gentrification in these kinds of neighborhoods that we, of course, want to see good development in and investment in. And so then how do we mitigate some of that, right? And and like I said, protecting long-term residents of the neighborhood from being pushed out as well as senior citizens of of the area. So I'm curious if those are, Catherine, if those are conversations that are being had amongst you all.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Ben Como, those are all excellent questions, and and those are topics that consistently get discussed when we look at our long-range plans in terms of, yes, how do we make areas, improve areas, create better places for people to live without pushing people out? It's a tricky, it's a tricky question, but those questions do come up frequently. And of course, those things will be considered as we move forward with any amendments to our codes to try to prevent that from happening. It's a complicated question, though, I don't have all the answers, and it's it's something that we could probably have an entire work session about in terms of of what strategies are, most definitely. I know that probably didn't answer your question, but it's something that we do discuss.
No, that's okay, Catherine, I'm glad to hear that you you all do think about it, I think that's important. And I I think that's a great idea, actually, a work session on how we prevent some of these things. Again, because it came up even in the Ad-Hoc, El Paso Solano Ad-Hoc Committee, I think, I actually think that's a great idea, a work session on how to mitigate pushing people out of these neighborhoods as we begin to invest and develop in them. And then just lastly, Mr. Clark, I'm curious about, I mean, your take on this, but also, I don't know if you'll be in charge of this or if you know, like, how how much do you think rent will cost for any particular business at one of these properties or or the sale of any of these particular properties once they're ready for that step?
Mayor, Counselor Ben Como, I'm not in charge of the rent, the developer is. I can tell you, as a small business owner, I have four employees myself. Not looking for someplace that, you know, breaks the bank, for sure. The the flip side to that is, it currently is an empty lot, generate no revenue, no gross receipts tax. So it is, there is a benefit to having something there. And and frankly, the the residential high-density zoning really limited what we could do as far as what could actually go on this property. So having a C two zoning applied to this gives us a tremendous amount of flexibility for the types of places that could go in there. You know, you've got down the street, the the center that you talked about, tattoo shop, the record shop, all those kind of places, barber shop. You know, all those, all those places could go into this development. You know, just because the developer says he's trying to attract one clientele or another, yeah, it's very conveniently located to the federal courthouse. It's kind of a no-brainer there. So I think that there's all kinds of opportunities that can go along with this property. It's not what I would call a high-end development. The the piece of property is a very difficult piece of property to develop because you obviously have a limited area for a limited amount of square footage that you can develop and charge for. So so it's gonna, we have to, we have to be very careful with the budget on this so that it is attractive to a lot of people.
Yeah, no, that's super helpful to help, I think for me, it's just important to keep, you know, raising this conversation and this issue and ensuring that we're having it. But that's very helpful to hear from you, Mr. Clark, so I appreciate it. And thank you very much, Catherine, as well. Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Sorg.
Thank you, Mayor. And I like this project for the reasons that Counselor Ben Como and Counselor Mayor Protam Gondra has been talking about. This is an infill, and it 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 looks like a nice infill for that area. How many times have you driven down these streets around here and seen the empty lots and wished there was something that was useful on them? I just have a a curious question. In the historic part, in the conversations or not, has there been any discussion about the storied history of that structure? The ownership and so forth, and any other information? Was there shared, and do we know any historic history of it? Whoever can answer?
Mayor, Mayor, Counselor Sorg, I know that Troy Ainsworth can definitely give you some information on that. I think that the original quarter piece goes back to late eighteen hundreds, nineteen ten, something like that. And when you go there, you can see, it is, it's literally the four walls on the corner. Unfortunately, there's just, there's not much left of it. Over the years, people have come in and added air conditioning ducts and vents and slump blocks, strange walls on the inside. And it suffered a fire, at one point it looked like, and some serious water damage and other things. And you know, when when buildings don't get used, they they're in trouble. But yeah, Troy could definitely fill you in a lot more information on that corner piece. And and I think that that's why, you know, we just didn't say, look, your own study says to knock it down. You know, us, myself as an architect, Troy as an architect, I I'm sad to see things go when they go away. And so, no, I think that we're we're serious about trying to help with that.
Who's study, whose study said to knock it down?
The city, the city's study says that it's a non-conforming building, or not non-contributing building, I'm sorry, non-contributing.
Yeah. Okay, contributing meaning there's no interesting history and so forth and so on.
Correct, I guess, I guess.
That's what I was getting at.
Yes, sir, contributing to the historic nature of the Mesquite District.
Yeah, got it, okay, very good, thank you for that information, and and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Voskus.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Clark, and my colleagues for your thoughtful questions. I just wanted to reiterate some points, I think, that Counselor Ben Como made, I think it's important to, you know, both keep the local character of of a place that that is historic and that we all are very proud of, while at the same time expanding our our economic opportunity here. You know, overall, I think, especially because this is an empty lot, I I support this development. And in particular, you know, the considerations that will be made by the developer to to assure that there's going to be a certain amount of local, local business that will, local business owners that will be able to use this space will be, you know, that that'd be something that I I would like to see perhaps in the future with with these types of developments. Right, to make sure that there's a certain amount of local wealth being generated back into local communities. I'm assuming this will help feed the TID district as well, which I think is terrific. But but do just want to reiterate that point that, you know, it'd be great always, when thinking about these spaces that are adjacent to both historic and residential properties, especially in some of our, you know, areas with different income levels, that we do have local businesses have the opportunity to to have affordable places to set up their business. So with that, I'll just say that, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Counselor, well, that's a good way to kind of, let me throw a couple of comments in there, off of your comments about building wealth. You know, I I I have a friend that still emails me, maybe watching. In fact, I know Counselor Florida says, who is this Emil? Well, Emil's lived here for a long time, he loves animals, and he's always staying involved. And the other day, a while back, when I asked him, when he said he's moving back home, I go, I thought, where's home? I thought this was home, he says, no, 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 I I'm from, originally from San Francisco. And I go, really, you're moving back to San Francisco? I mean, this is expensive real estate, he goes, oh, yeah, I bought this house back in the late fifties, I still own it. You know, and I'm like, wow, that, talk about building wealth, that's huge. I mean, he's able to go back there and it's worth millions, right? And and I guess, and and with all due respect to Ms. Gallegos, I think if you don't move, you've, this 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 structure here is going to actually make everyone's property worth a lot more. It builds wealth. It it the property taxes don't go up, but maybe they're not allowed to go up more than three percent, and they're not going to get recalculated to a new amount unless you sell it. So they're going to still be at the old, the older tax level, and and if anything, this just makes it more valuable. And if they were to pass it on or sell it to for a family member's use, you know, they they've actually built wealth, you know? So that's the way I look at it. But in light of what Counsel, Mayor Protam Gondra wanted, my question to you, Mr. Clark, is this, and this is just a suggestion, counsel can say yea or nay, and this is strictly to you. But being that it's it's a property that was from early in nineteen hundreds or even late eighteen hundreds, I wonder if you could have like a little plaque, maybe made out of bronze or whatever, attached to your building just to recognize that this was here, what used to be here before? It's a way of paying tribute to that. You know, that's a, that's a pretty significant piece of property, the original town site. You know, because I know there are residences, there are houses in the Mesquite Historic District, they have a little placard that they have, or a little wooden, you know, that 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 that's really nice to have. But then also, just to have your agreement that you will allow city staff to, you know, determine that if it if it really isn't viable or if it's not able to be reconstructed, you know, safely, that, okay. But kind of like one last time, let city staff take a look at it. And I know you just said that their their report probably didn't call into question that it was really useful, but, you know, I I guess just your your word that you would you would do that as well as maybe, you know, a way of having a plaque of some sort put up there just saying, you know, this is the original town site of Las Cruces and, you know, developed back in whatever, eighteen, whenever it was, and, you know, kind of go from there. I think that'd actually be kind of neat, you know, especially for an architect, you know, that's 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 pretty good, that's wild.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mayor, Mayor, Counselors, I I have, I have no problem with that. You know, you were asking about whether conditions should be attached to this. As as far as I'm concerned, the Historic Preservation Committee, those conditions were there for for exactly what you discussed, for review and approval. So it's not something that we are going to, it's not something that we're going to take down the pieces around it to find the original building and then knock it down the next day because we didn't like it and didn't think it was usable. Everything does involve the city staff as far as I'm concerned, so that's that's part of how we were approaching the project.
Okay, and before I get to Counselor Florida, Catherine has a question.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Jason is absolutely correct. There was a condition placed upon the site development by the Historic Preservation Committee, which still stands. It doesn't necessarily mean that we need to encumber the zoning with a condition as well, as long as that condition still stands with the site development. I did just want to point that out.
Okay. You, Counselor Florida.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, thank you, Ms. Harrison Rogers and Mr. Clark. So as far as the Historic Preservation Commission coming in on this, was that because Mr. Ainsworth called them in? Or is it just a matter, is it a matter of appropriate procedure when you're looking at an old structure to call in the commission? I'm just wondering about that. And then also, to have that little pla- I mean, that the little placard that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a great idea. I don't know if if the if the commission would have any say-so in that. And they're very particular about, you know, different structure, just because you're in the Mesquite District and it's an old house, even if it looks really nice, doesn't really make it, you know, doesn't qualify for that. uh, doesn't really make it, um, you know, doesn't qualify for that placard. Um, and I, and I'm glad too, uh, Ms. Harrison Rogers, that you mentioned that the city is very careful about improving areas but not pushing people out. I think that, uh, Ms. Ms. Gallegos said that she bought her house in nineteen thirty, if I recall correctly. And, um, and, and, and it's hard, it's always harder for older people, um, to see so many changes. So, thank you for that. Thank you for that awareness. So, um, so tell me, Mr. Clark, how is it exactly that the preservation, Historic Preservation Commission came into the picture?
Uh, Mayor, Counselor Flores, I, I may have Catherine jump in on this as well.
Oh.
Um, we were right. We, we kind of hit this transition point, which is why it's taken so long to get, to get through the process. The Mesquite Overlay District, um, they, they had a committee, um, that approved and, and reviewed all the projects for the Mesquite Zone. And that commission was basically disbanded. And then the Historic Preservation Committee for the City of Las Cruces took over that role. So, yes, it was a procedural, uh, situation. So our first, our first meeting was with the Historic Preservation to get their approval. And then we could move forward with the planning and zoning and so on and so forth.
Counselor Flores, uh, members of the council, yes, just to clarify, there, there's sort of two parts to this. One is that the Historic Preservation Commission has taken over the duties of the South Mesquite Overlay, um, District Committee. And so they're responsible for making recommendations regarding, uh, zoning, um, and other types of, of planning-related projects in this area. Now, on top of that, the Historic Preservation Commission is also, um, given the authority to review different types of projects throughout the city, um, on, on structures of a certain age. Um, as well as, um, looking at the site development also, um, under the authority of the South Mesquite Overlay, um, to make sure that any modifications, new development, or even the demolishment of certain structures is following the overlay's provisions. So it is required by code.
Great. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. So Mayor Portem, um, from what you've heard so far, um, are you okay with, um, some of the suggestions?
I am, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, are there, uh, any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Christine?
This is on the motion to approve ordinance twenty-nine fifty-nine. Counselor Beta Stuvie?
Yes.
Counselor Voskus?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gondara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, great. So now we're going to go to item seven point one, resolution twenty-one dash one-one-five.
So move, Gondara.
Just second.
A motion made by, uh, Mayor Portem, Gondara second by Counselor Voskus. And, uh, Ms. Terry Gayhart, you can, um, going to be discussing, I believe, or someone from your staff?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to lead the, lead the charge.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Terry Gayhart and I'm Director of Financial Services. I have to tell you, it's been quite a year. It's been a year of achievements and teamwork. As a team, city staff has overcome many obstacles and difficulties. In our fiscal year twenty nineteen CAFR, we had twelve findings. For the fiscal year twenty CAFR, it has dropped down to two findings. In twenty twenty, the city staff has overcome the following. Uh, purchasing has tightened the rules on quotes, bids, sole source, and exemptions. Humans Resources has provided, um, a workable reports on the conflict of interest. The team has worked together on controls on human resources, finance, purchasing, and budget treasury to eliminate issues that occurred with the Friends of Las Cruces and many of the items in the McCard Report. Finance has worked with budget to put a halt to appropriations and excessive budget for the cities, for the city as well as the JPAs. We have updated and forced SOPs and revised the manner in which we schedule entrance and exit conferences. All of these and more while navigating COVID. But I think the team's, uh, biggest achievement is migrating to the accrual method uh, in budgeting and reporting, not because I had a hand in it, yes, I did, but because it more appropriately shifts the city's focus from the cash in the checking account on one day in time to a recognition of all the city's commitments, promises to its citizens, its granters, stakeholders, and employees going forward and into the future. It creates transparency between budget and reporting. Hands down, a better focus. I need to make one final statement. I would like to thank my staff of the Financial Services Department for their dedication and tenacity to work with the departments, the JPAs, and auditors to achieve such a clean, well-produced report. You all earn my certificate of achievement every day. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our auditor, who is Chris Garter, and he's with the firm of Cantillo, uh, Hill and Brown.
Thank you, Terri. Trying to get the PowerPoint up here real quick. Can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And, uh, what I have here is a presentation with, um, some of the highlights from the exit, or from the exit conference that we had back in November with required communication that we as auditors are to make to those that are charged with governance. And so, with that, I'll get started. At any time, if anybody has any questions, um, feel free to interrupt me. I know with Zoom, sometimes it's hard to, to find a good spot to interrupt, but just go ahead and interrupt me whenever you have a chance. So the first, um, the first slide we have here is talking about our responsibilities under U.S. auditing standards and then also under government auditing standards. There's a lot of confusion as what audits really entail. And so the standards actually make us talk about this quite a bit. We talked about it at the entrance conference. We talked about it at the exit conference. And, um, what our responsibilities as your auditors are under U.S. auditing standards is that top left green box is, what you've hired us to do is express an opinion on your financial statements. And what that means is, if you look at the top red box, is we're giving what's called reasonable assurance. We don't look at every transaction. We look at internal controls. We have statistical samples. But we definitely don't look at everything. So there could be errors in your numbers. However, those errors are not going to be big enough, or what we call material enough, to change the opinion of those reading the financial statements. And so, if you were to take your financial statements and go to a banker, those errors are not going to be big enough to change that banker's opinion on the financial status of the city. So those are our, our standards that we have to follow for U.S. auditing standards. The bottom two, the New Mexico State Auditor requires all audits to be performed under government auditing standards. And this is more commonly referred to as the Yellow Book. And with the Yellow Book, we as auditors have to look at internal controls a little bit differently than we do with a regular audit. If you see that bottom left blue box, we have to look at those internal controls differently, but we're not giving an opinion on internal controls. In a regular audit, all we have to do is, is walk through one transaction, gain an understanding of your system, and then we can be done. Well, with the Yellow Book audit, we have to test control. We actually have to pick samples and look at those internal controls and test those samples. In addition, the New Mexico State Auditor also requires us to expand that testing. So there's additional items like travel and per diem, procurement, different things that they require us to include in those samples and test. And so what happens is, is we, we go through, we do that testing, and then in that report, we spell out what we do differently. And we were required to communicate, as you can see in the bottom right box, any significant matters that we note. And in New Mexico, again, the state auditor requires us to have a little bit higher threat or lower threshold. So any findings that we have, whether they rise to the level of a significant matter or not, it doesn't matter. We have to report those as findings in our audit. And so, again, the state auditor has kind of changed what our responsibilities are. The next page talks about the results of our audit. The first one, um, the first slide here talks about our actual opinion on the financial statements. We issued an unmodified, or as I like to put, a clean opinion. So what that opinion states is that your financial statements are fairly presented in, in accordance with the standards that we have to follow. In essence, this is the type of report that the city wants to get. It's, in essence, the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can give. In the financial statements, there are two other reports that are ours. Um, that one on the left is that Yellow Book report that I was talking to, talking about earlier. Again, we don't give an opinion on your internal controls. We just spell out how we test your internal controls differently. And we do have two findings that we'll talk about at the very end. The report on the right, because the city spends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand of federal funds, you're subject to a compliance audit. And with that audit, we do have given opinion. And based upon our testing over your federal grants, we're issuing an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, just like we did with your financial statements. Again, this is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can give. The next slide, when talking about required communication, if we had difficulties encountered in performing the audit, we'd have to let you know about them. And we're happy to say that we didn't. I know with COVID, our audit was a little bit different than it has been in the past. Um, and what that did, I think, is it actually put a little bit more pressure on your staff to come up with answers and things in a different way than they had to in the past. But again, as we ask questions or ask for supporting documents, management and finance were able to give us those supporting documents and get us those answers in a timely manner. And so what that shows, or what that in essence tells the council, is that your finance department has done a good job with maintaining your records and following those records so that they could respond timely to us. And so again, the audit went extremely smooth. There's really nothing that we have to report here. The next one, I think, is a very, very important communication. Um, if we as auditors are having to come in and make lots of adjustments, you know, that should cause the council some concern as you're taking your financial numbers throughout the year and making financial decisions. But as you can see, we did not have a single adjustment. And, you know, I know Terry referred to, and I know there was some reference earlier about the different basis of accounting. And so, with our financial statements, we have two methodologies or that, that have to be reported. And we did not have any adjustments based upon either methodology that the city is responsible for maintaining your records. And as we go through the presentation, I have some, um, financial graphs, and we'll kind of talk about those different methodologies that the city has to follow. But what this slide, I think, really communicates to council is that as you're giving those financial numbers throughout the year, you can put, place reliance on them and feel good that you're making your financial decisions based on good numbers. Again, we did not have a single adjustment to either methodology of accounting that we have to report on in your financial statements. And so, again, that shows that management is properly accounting for the transactions that are flowing through the city. The next slide is talking about the CAFR. You guys talk about your financial statements a lot of times referring it to as a CAFR. Well, what a CAFR is, is that there are guidelines out there that require the city to go above and beyond what GAAP generally accepted accounting principles require. So your financial statements, I actually calculated, there's probably about twenty percent included in your financial statements. That's not required by auditing standards. So we could give a clean opinion and, uh, without that information. But what happens is, is that your staff has gone through and basically, um, accepted giving additional information that is very important to readers of the financial statements. And one of the benefits by going through and giving that twenty percent additional information, and as you can see, it's, it's things like property, taxpayers. There's a lot of statistical information that users of the financial statements find very useful. But it, the, the best result, or one of the benefits of doing that, is the fact that your bond ratings, they give you credit for that. So when a, a city or a governmental entity will go after and, and actually, um, prepare their financial statements to be a CAFR and include all that additional information, it helps the city with your bond ratings. The next slide is just talking about taking that CAFR and submitting it to a national organization that is very well-respected um, in the United States. It's called GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. And the GFOA has a program where you submit your financial statements. So you have your expanded financial statements, the additional information, and they review it to ensure that it completes, it has all the required documentation, and that it's following all the standards. And so again, it's going above and beyond. The city has received this award for sixteen years. And the city has only won a twenty New Mexico governments in two thousand and nineteen to receive that award out of more than seven hundred governments. So, in our state, there really are not a lot of people or not a lot of organizations that will hold themselves to that higher threshold like the city has. And so I think it's something that the city should be very proud of. And the city has only won out of all the New Mexico municipalities to receive this award. So, again, it's, it's not, um, not a lot of people hold themselves to these higher standards. And again, I think really it's something the city should be proud of getting that award for sixteen years. The last part of the, the required communication is to talk about the findings. As Terry mentioned, um, this year, we ended up having two findings. Both of these findings do not rise to the level of what we call a material weakness, um, which is the highest level of a finding. The first one, internal controls over cash receipts is actually the lowest level of finding. It's another matter. Um, during the year, the, uh, there was one cash receipt that we tested in our sample where we didn't follow city policy that requires, um, certain review and signatures to be made on that. Um, and so we had, I think it was one out of twenty-five transactions, um, that did not have that additional internal control documented on it. In the past, I think there were some more exceptions. Um, so the city has made progress. Um, I think in the prior year, there was like four or five items that this happened to. This year, there was only one. So, even though the finding has still been repeated, the city has made progress with that particular finding. The next finding is a new one for this year. It's prisoner housing, and it's something that the city caught during some of their internal reviews. It was noted that the county was charging for prisoner housing that it shouldn't have been. And I know that the process has stopped. Payments are not being made now. Um, but again, during the fiscal year, there was some payment. So this finding, um, controls have been implemented. And next year, this finding should be removed. During our audit, we're required to test all of the prior year findings. And as Terry mentioned, quite a few of them have been resolved. And so I believe there's ten or eleven on here that based upon our testing, when we went through to test those findings, the internal controls that the city said they would put in place were put in place. And based upon our testing, these findings have been resolved. So, again, we are charged to look at the controls that the city says they're going to implement and make sure that those are functioning in proper, um, and properly being functioned and, and put into place. So based upon our testing, all of these particular findings were resolved and were not repeated into the financial statements. With that, we'll go into some graphs. So that's all the required communication. And then we have a few graphs just to talk about some of the financial highlights. These first few, but actually the first two slides, we talked about different methods of accounting. Um, this is going to be full accrual accounting on these first two methods. And what, what this is called is government-wide financial statements. And what happens with these government-wide financial statements is all your individual funds are put into one or two, um, columns. And so we have included in these financial statements, long-term assets, even for your governmental funds, and long-term liabilities. So, again, the assets include your buildings, your infrastructure and things like that. Your debt also includes bonds and those payable. So it's, it's includes all of the financial assets and all the financial liabilities of the city. And again, as I mentioned, those, those two are combined into two columns. You take all your governmental activities, like your special revenue funds, your general fund, and you push them all together into one fund. And then you have your business-type activities with all seven enterprise funds that are combined into one fund. And so based upon, um, these next two charts, this is the methodology of accounting that was followed for these two. And as you can see, the assets have stayed fairly consistent, the liabilities have stayed fairly consistent. And the net position, which is another way of saying your equity, has stayed fairly consistent between the three years on this method of accounting. There is a slight increase with assets, um, of approximately fifty-four million dollars this year. And thirty-seven of that related to restricted cash from loan proceeds. As you can see, the loans also, your. As you can see, the loans, also your liabilities, went up by approximately $41 million. And a part of that was that additional loans that have been incurred. But for the most part, your assets and liabilities on this method of accounting have stayed fairly consistent. You'll see the liabilities, we talk about the additions to para and the retiree healthcare. And so included on this method of accounting, we, the city has to record your portion of the unfunded amount of para. And so I've got on the next slide, just some highlights to just kind of show your portion of what para is underfunded. And so really, the responsibility of the city is to adopt a budget and to make sure that in that budget, you're paying the required contributions by the rates set by para. And the city has always done that. And I was talking earlier about the yellow book audit. And as a part of that yellow book audit, the state auditor has us test some of those types of transactions. And the city did not have any exceptions. So you're actually collecting and remitting those amounts properly to para. However, those rates that have been established by para over the last several years have never been significant enough to make sure that their assets are greater than their liabilities. And so at this point in time, I believe para is about $5 billion underfunded. And so at the end of the year, for as of June 30th, 20, your portion of that unfunded $5 billion is 163 million. And then with the retiree healthcare, it's 52 million. So again, it's, it's not like the city is going to have to write a check for these liabilities. You're going to continue funding para based upon the rates that they've established. And what might happen is as benefits to retirees might change over the years or contributions are going to get increased. I read something that one of the plans, one of the retirement plans for the state was planning on doing some increases over the next few years. And so that could change what you're, you as an employer and also your employees have to contribute in the future. The next, actually the remaining slides deal with your funds on an individual basis. And the governmental funds with your, your general fund and your special revenue funds and your debt service fund and the capital projects funds are on what we call a modified accrual basis of accounting. And with those, with that basis of accounting for your governmental funds, assets, long-term assets are not included. So when you have your infrastructure and buildings, those type of assets are not included in these financial statements. Some of the receivables and some of the assets that are included are those that are collected within 60 days after year end. And so if, if we receive an amount close enough after year end, it is shown up as an asset. And then liabilities, we don't include in these reports. Long-term liabilities such as notes and bonds payable, they're, they are not included in those numbers. When we have bonds and debt that is issued, it is included as an increase or in essence included as a revenue. And then when you have bond payments, they're included as expenditures as you're making those payments. So it doesn't affect the balance sheet when we're doing those capital items or debt items. They're included on the income statement, which is very different from the methodology we just talked about. So the very first slide we have is just of the general fund. And as you can see, over the last five years, the general fund revenues, or I'm sorry, the general fund assets have remained fairly consistent along with the liabilities. And that position again is the same as calling it equity. It's the equity of the general fund. And so your equity has remained fairly consistent over the last couple of years. In your general fund, your assets are comprised of these following items. So as of June 30th, 2020, the fund had approximately $36.2 million of cash and investments, 17, almost $18 million of accounts receivable, and then 1.7 million of inventory. Your assets increased approximately $4 million from the prior year. And really, the biggest increase is, is the increase in cash that happened during this current year. And so in the prior year, you had about $31 million in cash. And at the end of this year, the, the general fund had $36 million of cash. The general fund liabilities have, again, were made fairly consistent between the two years. There's about 10 million at the end of this year. There's 1.7 million of accounts payable, 9.2 million of accrued liabilities. Deferred property tax is about 700,000. And then there was about 300,000 of other items that were included as liabilities. So again, you know, there's really not, not very big swings with your liabilities in that fund. The last five years, there's a graph showing the general fund revenues and expenses. As you can see, the revenues have increased a little bit. And part of that increase is attributable to about 5 and a half million increase in gross receipts taxes. Expenditures decreased by about $4 million last year. A part of that was a decrease in community development of about 700,000, a decrease in economic development of 1 million, and then a decrease in the capital outlay of about $3 million. And so as you can see, the last several years, the general fund revenues have exceeded their expenses. And this year, it was approximately $19 million that revenues were greater than the expenses in the general fund. The next set of slides are relating to your enterprise funds. And this is on the full accrual basis of accounting. And so this is similar to the government wide where we include long-term assets and long-term liabilities. But instead of being all combined together like in the government wide statements, we actually, each fund is separately reported in these particular financial statements. And so we've got some financial highlights for a few of your, your enterprise funds. The first one is the gas fund. And again, as you can see, the, the assets have remained fairly consistent over the last several years. Liability is the same thing. You'll see liabilities increased a couple of, a few years ago. And that was as an implementation of GAZB 75. So prior to that date, your portion of the unfunded amount of retiree healthcare was not required to be reported. And so three years ago was the first year that that liability had to be recorded in your financial statements. And so that was their portion that had to be recorded. And again, the net assets where, or the net position, which is your equity, where you take your assets less liabilities have remained fairly consistent over the last five years. The financial highlights as far as revenue and expenses with the gas fund. I mean, the operating loss in the fund has remained fairly consistent over the last several years. But however, the change in your net income has decreased over the last couple of years. And a part of that decrease this year in FY 20 was due to the interest income compared to the prior year. And so with your gas fund, you have your operational expenses and revenues, and then you have your non-operational. And again, the operating has remained fairly consistent. It's just some of the non-operating like your interest income. And so this year, expenditures were a little bit higher than your revenues, which is opposite of what happened in the prior year. And so there was a net loss with the gas fund of approximately about 600,000 this year. The next fund is the water fund. And again, here's your, all your assets and liabilities with your net position. And again, the assets and liabilities have remained fairly consistent. You do see a little bit of a slight increase, but your net position or your equity has remained fairly consistent over the last several years. Again, you'll see the increase three years ago with liabilities, again, that related to the retiree healthcare. Your revenues and expenses for the water fund have gone up over the last five years. There was a little bit of a dip in 18, but other than that, it's really been a consistent trend going up with both your revenues and expenses. The last two years, the water fund has shown revenues greater than your expenses. And in 2020, it was about $2.4 million. Your revenues were greater than your expenses. The next one is wastewater fund, your balance sheet. And again, same story, really everything's remained fairly consistent. You know, there was a slight increase again, three years ago from 35 million to 38 million in your liabilities, which again relates to that, the implementation of GAZB. But really, they've remained fairly consistent. And if you look at your net position, your, in essence, your equity, it's remained fairly consistent over the last five years. The revenues and expenses in the wastewater fund have stayed fairly consistent. They've been fairly flat the last four years. This year, at the end of the year, there was about a $1.1 million revenues exceeding expenses. And so they did have a net income this year. But again, you know, it's, it's stayed fairly consistent over the last couple of years. The solid waste fund, same story. Assets have remained fairly consistent. Your liabilities have remained fairly consistent. And your equity or your net position has remained fairly consistent. So it's, there's really not been any trends, any big changes in this fund. Your revenues in, in FY 20 did exceed your expenses. So there was a loss of about 1.1 million, but your revenues have stayed fairly consistent. And the, the reason for the, the increase in expenses, as you can see at the bottom, is primarily attributable to professional services of 1.7 million and also an increase in your post-pension cost of 1.8 million. So those were the big contributors to the increase in the expenses this year from the prior year. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation. And we have three council members so far. Counselor Flotis, Beta Stuvie, and Gondra that wish to ask you something, Chris? Oh, I guess Counselor Flotis didn't put her, Counselor Beta Stuvie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Terry, and your full team for all the work that they've done. And thank you, Chris, to you and your team as well. I have a couple of questions when it comes to the findings. And this, I'm, with the first one where it was the receipt. When you were doing those types of checks, are you able to tell what department it came from? Or is it?
Yes, we, we can tell what kind of depart, where what department it came from. For the life of me, I'm not, I know it was through the Treasury Department. So we did a few different cash receipts testing from different departments. This one was from the Treasury Department.
Okay. And then sometimes duplication of, of services in some way. Is, you know, do you look at consolidation of, of different enterprise funds or any other strategies to keep the city in good financial standing, Ms. Gayhart, as a part of this, this audit process?
Certainly, yeah, thank you, Counselor. Thank you for the question. Well, certainly we look at all the findings. And I think it doesn't hurt to remind yourself of history either. Because if you don't remind yourself of history, you're going to repeat it. And I think we've learned a lot through the process and especially through the purchasing function and tightening those controls to make sure that they are in place. And I would say we're going to grow from there. We're going to continue to grow, we're going to do better. And I think especially this change from the cash basis, I'm sorry, but the cash basis is too narrow. You need to be recognizing all of the commitments that you have with, you know, outside agencies, granters, stakeholders, and even to the employees. I mean, that's the basis of the net pension obligation and the OPEV is that you've made promises and they're going to continue to grow. And you have to watch how they grow and how they're going to impact the city going forward, adding additional services or, or additional programs because it's going to influence your future. So yeah, we're looking at trends and how they're going to affect the city and where we're, where we're going to go.
Great, that makes, makes me happy to hear that, Ms. Gayhart. Again, thank you and congratulations on the, the vast improvement. I think taxpayers in particular and our constituents here should be proud of this work and proud of the improvements that the city's made. And honestly, proud of getting the recognition for being one of the, you know, best-run cities financially for, for many years. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Gardner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I think that's it.
Mayor, if, I would just like to say, you know, the audit, when we got first started out, we held a lot of entrance conferences. And you know, one of the, the topics that has been around for probably about 10 or 15 years is tone at the top. And that comes from council and the board. And after those entrance conferences, we had, I had quite a few calls from council members talking about things that had happened in the past and just kind of giving us some direction on how to take some of our audit approach. And so I just want to say thank you, counselors, for taking your job serious and calling me and letting me know what those concerns were. That was very helpful. What we found was is that management was already aware of them. I don't think there was really anything that came as a surprise and had already been dealing with it. And so, you know, as we go through an audit, you process so many transactions. There are going to be findings, but that's not a terrible thing. That's just a way to learn and to get better. And so as counselors, what you want to see is you don't have findings five, 10 years old that just keep sticking around and around. And that's not the culture. I mean, with all the findings that you guys resolved last year, you know, it took a lot of hard work and a lot of effort, and management is paying attention to them. And again, I think the tone starts from the top. And so I just again, want to say thank you for all the participation. I think you made it a more beneficial audit. And again, we might see some findings in the future. That's not necessarily a terrible thing because there are so many transactions that flow through the city. You want to see how the responses are. And with those findings that happened last year, not only did management respond, but council was very proactive in this process. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate that. Okay, so it doesn't look like there's any further questions. So if there's not, Christine, call for the question.
This is on a motion to approve Resolution 21-115. Counselor Beta Stuvie?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
Counselor Sorek?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, item 7.2, Resolution 21-116. A motion, a second?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Sorek, second by Counselor Ben Como. And Matt Sines, I think, is going to present?
Yes, sir. Great to see everyone today. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, Matthew, thanks.
Thank you very much. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council administration. For the record, my name is Matthew Sines, Senior Budget Analyst with the Budget Office. And I'm here today to present the proposed budget adjustments for fiscal year 2021 for February. One second. Okay, there we go. So with these budget adjustments, there are no new programs or policy initiatives. The adjustments are focused on compliance and alignment. Speaking of compliance, with the adoption of Resolution 21-115, which is the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, that was just presented by Terry, Terry Gayhart and her team, we are updating our beginning balances to reflect those audited actuals. This also gives the departments an opportunity to reassess their budget. Also, excuse me, also, as our chief budget officer had mentioned during our budget retreat, we are reducing investment income due to COVID-19 as well as the market. We're just not seeing the rate of return on our investments. So we have several adjustments for that. Also with me today, I have the Public Works Director, Mr. Davis Adiel. He'll, he'll discuss the capital improvement program. And as always, we're striving to apply best practice. Before I jump into the adjustments, I just want to point out that the amounts we are requesting today are located in the column with yellow text. Also, we're letting you know what type of transaction we're processing with the letter that follows the amount. The meanings can be found in our legend at the bottom of our screen. So E is for expense, R is for revenue, and T is for transfer. So let's go ahead and get started. So from the general fund, we are reducing investment income by 288,000. Also on the general fund, we are reducing our, excuse me. Also from the general fund, we are transferring $14,639 to fund 2402, the court awards, to close out this fund. This is part of Resolution, I'm sorry, House Bill 560, which those funds are now maintained at the state level. Also on the general fund, community development is requesting $4 for the Metropolitan Planning Organization as part of a rounding factor for their grant match. Fund 1005, Public Works is actively working to close out their engineering service fund by transferring half a million dollars to the following funds. Fund 2600, Public Works, 200,000 for street maintenance. Fund 2650, 150,000 for flood control. Fund 5100- Fund 5100, utilities, 150,000 for shared services. Fund 1400, Public Works, they're reducing their investment income by 11,620. On Fund 1500, which is the Hold Harmless GRT, we're actually reducing our transfers to the prisoner care fund, Fund 2440. With COVID-19, we have seen a significant decrease in the number of detainees, so we feel that they are fully funded for the year. We have several adjustments to investment income, which we are reducing. I'll just list them out for you. Fund 2600, 24,000. Fund 2650, 14,000. Fund 2710, 20,000. Fund 2780, 20,000. Fund 2710, 17,000. Also on Fund 2810, we are carrying over capital expenditures of 542,000 for heavy equipment. Again, we have a list of investment income, which we are reducing. Fund 2815, 38,000. Fund 2825, 576. Fund 3618, 3,000. Fund 4005, 34,000. Fund 4030, close to 7,000. On Fund 4031, Public Works, they're decreasing their investment income by 72,000. They're also carrying over capital expenditures of 457,000 for the regional aquatic center. Again, we have some more investment income decreases. Fund 4032, 80,000. Fund 4201, 1,000. Fund 4202, 38,000. In addition to an expenditure carryover for heavy equipment of 31,403. Fund 4205, we're reducing investment income by close to 8,000. Again, we have a list of investment incomes, income adjustments that we are reducing. Fund 4228, 19,000. Fund 4230, 91,000. Fund 4400, 22,000. Fund 4632, 40,000. Moving on to utility shared services, Fund 5100, we are truing up their investment income by 11,000. We're also budgeting close to 20,000 for a contracted senior office assistant position. In addition, we're transferring out $2,000 to Fund 5160. As you can see below on Fund 5160, you see the $2,000 coming in, and we're also decreasing expenditures by 614. Fund 5150, we are truing up their investment income by 372. Fund 5200, we're reducing investment income by 22,000, also reducing investment income for Fund 5205 of 11,000. Again, we have a few adjustments for investment income for reducing those amounts. Fund 5250, 41,000. Fund 5260, 7,000. And then Fund 5270, 590. We're also reducing expenditures on 5270 by 52,000. 5271, we're reducing investment income by 3,000. And then they're also requesting 250,000 for meter upgrades. Fund 5300, we're reducing that investment income by about 10,000. Fund 5301, we're actually increasing our revenue projections for water based on historical data by 167,000. We're reducing the expenditures by 1,000. 5305, we're reducing investment income by 825. 5320, we're reducing investment income by 10,000. We're also budgeting a portion of the contract for the water conservation assistant of 5,474. Fund 5345, we're reducing the investment income by 3,000, also expenditures by 60,000. On Fund 5346, it's, we have a same, similar situation, reducing the revenues of 681 as well as expenditures by 25,000. Fund 5347, we're reducing investment income by 361 as well as expenditures by 2,000. Again, we have a list of investment income adjustments to decrease those amounts. Fund 5348, 5,000. 5349, 3,000. 5350 is 3,000. 5375, 351. Fund 5378, we're reducing investment income by 5,000. Fund 5379, also reducing investment income by close to 3,000. And on Fund 5400, utilities wastewater, we're reducing the investment income by 3,000, also budgeting close to 20,000 for a contracted assistant senior position. In addition, we're going to transfer out 86,000 to Fund 5450. As you can see on Fund 5450, we have the 86,000 coming in from the transfer, as well as budgeting for the expenditures for additional SCADA projects. Not to mention, we're also reducing investment income by 21,621. Fund 5401, continuing with wastewater, we're reducing their investment income by close to 16,000. For the remainder of the presentation, these are all reductions to investment income, so I'm just going to go ahead and read them for you. Fund 5405, 3,000. 5420, 3,000. Fund 5446, 5,000. Fund 5447, 8,000. Fund 5460, 4,000. 5479, 3,000. Fund 5500, 20,000. Fund 5510, 13,000. And finally, Fund 5516, 16,000. So with that, I want to thank you all for your time and thank you for your patience. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Davis Adiel to discuss the capital improvement program. David?
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Mayor, Council, David Adiel, Public Works Director, and I'll be going over the CIP amendments. We have to start off with ADA compliance. We will be reducing that to increase the monies in the general facilities improvement, which is below in the amount of 3,500. And this will cover some improvements over on certain projects, one of those being Entrada del Sol, which is the gateway at the intersection of Hadley and Manzanita. Next, we have the regional aquatic center construction, and that is a carryover adjustment that Mr. Sines mentioned earlier. And the next two reflect those adjustments to the reduced income. So these next two, the gas bond projects, 2015A, and the water miscellaneous, those are being adjusted to actuals. These next two are also adjustments to actuals. That's the water bond projects, the 2015A, and the wastewater SCADA projects. The next three projects are being removed from the CIP. First, we have the Police Department HVAC filtration and renovation, and this is being removed because it is actually a part of the IGA project that is currently on the CIP. Next, we have Klein Park improvements and the Klein Park restrooms. These are being removed because there are being revisions made to the Klein Park master plan. And with that, here are council's options, and both Mr. Sines and I are available for any questions.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions? Going once, one twice, don't see it. Hope, Mayor, Counselor Flores?
Always, always like.
Always.
Always. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Mr. Sines, and thank you, Mr. Adiel. Mr. Adiel, if you know, can you share with us why the Klein Park projects were removed? Do you know why? And if you do, would you please share that with us?
Mayor, Counselor Flores, I will defer that over to our Parks and Rec Department. So I will ask Sonia Delgado to go ahead and speak.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Sonia Delgado, Director of Parks and Recreation. The reason that was taken off is the Klein Park, our neighborhood groups wanted to revise that master plan a little bit. In the beginning, they had the bathrooms on there, and then with the second revision, they had them removed. So we have made the adjustment on the CIP. I thought we had made that prior, but about a month ago or so, Mayor Protem Gandara had brought that to my attention, so we're making that adjustment now.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Delgado. Thank you, Mr. Adiel. And thank you, Mayor Protem Gandara, for reminding them. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, see none. Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 21-116. Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sork?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, seven, item 7.3, Resolution 21-117.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Sork, second by Counselor Vazquez. And Margaret Neal, I believe, is going to be discussing.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Margaret Neal, Library Administrator, for the record. I have a very brief presentation for you on the screen here, the Soquist Estate. Okay, so as you can see, we received a trust request from the John W's and Magdalena C. Soquist Trust. We were notified in July of 2019 that we were one of the organizations that was receiving funding. We received further notification in October of 2019 that things were moving. And in December of 2020, we received notification that the trust was ready to, we were ready to get our part of the trust. So the amount that was given to the library was 241,000, a little bit over that. And we are looking at some potential uses for that money, things that are programming costs that are not covered by the state GeoBond or state aid funding, network infrastructure and technology upgrades, which has become especially important in COVID times, capital improvement and repair of the Brandonigan Library Facility, and other needs to be determined through Elevate Las Cruces, mass library master plan we're looking to do, and community influence. That is all I have. Those are your options, and I stand for questions.
Counselor Flores, did you forget to put your hand down, or did you have another question?
I forgot to put my hand down. I'm so sorry.
No problem. Mayor Protem, Counselor Vazquez, Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Wow, how exciting. What a blessing. Thank you, too, for that thinking of the library in that way. We certainly can use the funding. Margaret, talk to me about how you'll decide, you know, which priorities. Will you have some open meetings? Will that compete with staff? Tell me, I'm sure you have a long laundry list of things that you'd like to do, but how are you going to determine which go first?
Well, we are going to be going out for a master plan pretty quickly, and I think that's going to dictate a lot of what our, what our priorities are going to be moving forward.
And so do you already have a consultant picked out and?
Not yet. But we're going to be creating an RFP and going out to bid for that.
So do you anticipate spring or summer, having that, those master plan meetings, that kind of thing? Or do you have an idea, timeframe?
We don't have a timeframe yet. We do have funding for it from the Mealy Estate, which was another very generous donation to the library. It's approved, so we have the money, and we just need to start the process. The museums are just finishing up their master plans, so we're next week.
I'm really excited to look, you know, to hear more about this moving forward. I have a number of constituents that have a love right for the library and feel like we really need to improve our library and talk about, you know, access, that kind of thing. And so they'll be very happy to know that, you know, this is moving and that you've gotten some very generous funding to be able to do that. And honestly, Margaret, my hope is that we approve a second layer of GeoBonds right after this first, first piece of the GeoBonds that the library gets, you know, some funding to be able to do some other things. I'm fond of the library. You've done so much, and it's an excellent library with, you've been able to do a lot with very little. So thank you. I'm excited again to hear more, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Vazquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Margaret. I actually just had a question about the donors themselves. I was wondering if you could just, if you had any background or context on the foundation and the donors, would love to learn just a little bit more about them.
It was a little bit of a surprise to us, so we had to do a little bit of research. Mr. and Mrs. Soquist lived in Las Cruces for several, many years. And Mr. Soquist was a very successful farmer and realtor locally, who was a, he and his wife are lifelong learners and loved a lot of different, they gave money to not just the library, but also, I think, to the Animal Services Center for the Sea Valley or, and also PBS. So they're very, they were very into, very appreciative of lifelong learning and educational opportunities in the community. So unfortunately, I never got to meet them. But I wish I had, because, you know, these are such generous gifts, and we get them always very grateful. And I wish I could tell them that.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you, Margaret. It's really nice to know that our library and our city had an impact on folks that could give back. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Margaret. I was the same. I was wondering about a little bit of background from the Soquist family, and just to say thank you for the generous donation, and it's very much appreciated and will be well-used. Thank you.
I agree. Counselor Bencomo?
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, thank you so much, Margaret. What exciting news. I missed the beginning of your presentation. I had to run out for a quick sec, but came back to very exciting faces on my screen. So, you know, I didn't have a question most, only after Mayor Protem asked, do you intend, do you think you'll use some of these funds for the master planning process? Or are you intending to leave these funds untouched until you get to that point where you're like, we know what we're going to do?
Well, for right now, we're kind of not, we're leaving them untouched. We have other funding that's going to pay for the master plan. So right now, they're just sitting there waiting to be dispersed.
Good. No, I think that's a good call. And then are you going, was, will there be a conversation with the library board? Will they be involved in that process?
Yes, Counselor Bencomo, they will be, yes.
Cool.
We actually have a meeting this month, on the 25th, where we're discussing the request.
Great. I think, I mean, people love the library. The library board was one of my first, actually, I think, appointments as counselor. People jumped at the chance to be on the library board, because they think it's very beloved. So very exciting. Thank you very much, and congrats.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, well, I think that pretty much does it. I don't see any more additional comments. Okay, well, thank you very much, Margaret. And if the family is out there watching, the Soquist, that name sounds familiar. It really does. I just can't place it. But nonetheless, thank them. If there's any members of the family reaches out to the city or are watching right now, thank you very much. Okay, with that, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 21-117. Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sork?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so now we're going to go to item 7.4, Resolution 21-118.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Sork, second by Counselor Vazquez. And who's going to, Chris Dunn is going to present.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Is everybody able to hear me okay?
Yeah, we still can't see you there, Mr. Uh, were you? Yeah, we still can't see you there, Mr., what do you call yourself?
Christopher, or Mr. Dunn, if you want to address me by a mister.
No, no, no. Remember how you said that you were so handsome that I guess you'd break the camera or something like that?
Oh, yeah, you know, that's why you just get to enjoy the rich timber of my voice and no image, unfortunately, but.
Okay, right. There was a Seinfeld episode like that where this guy acted like he was really old, and it turned out he was like 15, 14.
Well, I guess we'll have to see if my face matches up to your expectations whenever I get a camera.
Okay.
All right. Well, again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Christopher Dunn. I am the policy analyst for the City of Las Cruces. I am now going to be presenting a resolution on supporting American democracy and condemning votes that object to the certification of Electoral College votes. A little background on this resolution. On December 14th, 2020, members of the Electoral College cast their votes in alignment with who won the popular vote in their respective states. On January 6th, 2021, members of the US Congress met to confirm the Electoral College votes, as is established by the Electoral Count Act passed by Congress in 1887. At this meeting, New Mexico Representative Yvette Harrell joined other members of Congress in voting against the certification of electoral votes cast for Joe Biden in Arizona and Pennsylvania. Representative Harrell indicated that she chose to object because she felt that changing the election rules without approval of state legislatures, as she had said was done in Arizona and Pennsylvania, was undemocratic and potentially unconstitutional. And while it's not totally uncommon to have objections to the certification of Electoral College votes, Representative Harrell's actions were not necessarily in line with traditional division of power that would have the judicial branch ruling on any matters of constitutionality. So with these items in mind, the resolution before you here condemns the votes of Representative Yvette Harrell objecting to the certification of the electoral votes of the state of Arizona and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And with that, these are the options available to Council today, and I will remain available to answer any questions that you might have to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Chris. And I took a look at this resolution versus the one that was originally submitted, and I guess you updated a little bit. You did a good job.
Thank you. Yeah, I tried to keep the body of the original content, but make updates as we're.
You added a very important part, and I'll talk about it at last. But let's see, Counselor Vazquez and Counselor Benkomo?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd actually just like to request at this time, if we could have public comment on this item, or if you'd prefer to wait until the Council provides their comments. But I know I got about 10 emails, Mayor. I know you received several as well, but I'd love for those to be read into the, to the public sphere here, if we could.
How about if you read the ones that you'd like? I mean, because I only had, I mean, I had a lot of them were just in support of it, but there was maybe just one or two that actually said public input. I mean, a lot of them were just saying, you know, they just expressed their support for it. But if you have some others that specifically said public that want it to be read, please do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was just assuming all the emails you got on a particular item would count as kind of public comment, I guess, the same way that if they were at City Hall and somebody would just come up and say, support something, that would still, still count as public comment. But, you know, I can, I can pull some emails up while, while maybe Counselor Benkomo provides some comments and.
There you go. Yeah, if you don't mind. Counselor Benkomo?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Vazquez. I think that's a great idea. I am, yes, thank you, Chris, for that presentation. I wasn't sure if you'd present, or I would, but that was great. Thank you. If you can go back to the background piece, I think it's important to note that, and what kind, and I think it's a critical piece of information that on January 6th, another pretty significant thing happened, and that is that extremist groups overtook the Capitol, the United States Capitol. And it was indirect, and I don't mean to laugh, I, at this point, the level of seriousness that that is and the correlation between that and the months and months of false narrative from then-President Trump about fraud in the election that has gone over and over disproved by many of, by many courts that then led to the events of January 6th, which I think are important pieces in this conversation. I, as I was watching in frankly disbelief, embarrassment, shame, anger on January 6th at the insurrection and what was happening, I thought to myself, when members of Congress reconvene later this day, how will anyone come back and then try to vote against the Electoral College votes? How is anybody going to step back on the floor of Congress and vote against this? Yet Representative Yvette Harrell, along with her GOP colleagues, did just that. Actually, not all of them. I was watching the Senate floor where some of her Senator, some of the Republican senators decided they had arrived that day with full intent to vote against these results, and they changed their minds after that insurrection because they know how dangerous it is for someone with the highest pulpit to make such accusations. Now, for me, this is much bigger issue. This is an issue of democracy. This is an issue of accountability, and this is an issue of racial equity. The votes of Arizona and Pennsylvania, there was so much work done by Black, Brown, and Indigenous organizations who turned out in record numbers in those states, in Arizona and Pennsylvania. So by voting to not support the certification of those votes cast out of that state is inherently disenfranchising the voters of those states, which predominantly and in huge numbers were Black, Brown, and Indigenous voters. Now, I know the issue of unity has been raised, and I read something really powerful the other day about unity will flow through accountability. The path to healing will come through justice, and I really believe that. When there is no accountability for the acts of January 6th and the weeks before, what will happen is an erosion of our democracy. Yesterday, I read in the New York Times that 106 bills across state, across states in this country have already been presented to make voting harder, for more people to be disenfranchised. 106 bills across state legislatures have been presented by members of the Republican Party to make voting harder and less accessible to Black, Indigenous, and people of color. That is what happens when there is no accountability. I think it's important for us to have this conversation because Representative Yvette Harrell represents all of us. And just like I expect to be held to high standards and be held accountable for the things I do and say in my votes, and I get emails all the time about people disagreeing with me, and I appreciate that. And so for me, as this body who I know respects the sacredness of democracy and the vote, I think this is an important public statement about, we can disagree on policies, but this is not that. Disenfranchising voters is not up for argument on a policy issue. So this is for me why I felt it was important to raise this issue with the Council. I will stop there. I just wanted to make sure that part of the timeline on this slide reflected what happened on January 6th and the violence that ensued that was caused directly from, so significant false allegations from President Trump and many of his supporters. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr., for Mr. Dunn. When you were researching and getting background, what, what was your intent to, well, I know that it came from Counselor Benkomo at one of the meetings that she would like to see something like this. But I know that when we do resolutions, it's usually to take a position, as we did with welcoming, being a welcoming community and on DACA. And, and those were politically neutral. But, or our resolutions are too forward to the state legislature so that they can take action on our policies that they're in. So what, Mr. Dunn, was your intent in, or your end result or goal, besides probably being told that you had to do it? I'm just wondering. What was your analysis? You know, what was your process in working through this?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Flores. Yeah, you know, I consider really my position and my role to be to provide information, not in a biased fashion, and to be able to provide information to allow Council to make the decisions that are reflective of their beliefs and the beliefs of the community that they represent. So in my research for this, while Counselor Benkomo developed a resolution that may have had a particular objective in mind, my personal intent, regardless of my own beliefs or opinions or anything else, is just to present information that allows Council to be able to consider what's being put for them, remain unbiased, and to allow Council and Mayor to make a vote as they see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Thank you for your work. I appreciate it very much. All that being said, I don't support this resolution, and I said that when, you know, with all due respect to my colleague, Counselor Benkomo. And the reasons I, and I, and I received several emails this morning, and, and one of them was from someone I, well, only of all the people who sent me an email, only two. There were 10 or eight people. There were nine people who sent me emails over the weekend. I read them this morning. And of those, I only know two people who are, that I'm familiar with and whose points of view I respect. And they were urging me to vote in favor of the resolution. I did not have time to reply to them, except to thank them for their input. And one constituent said that this really went beyond partisanship, fending the flames, or adding fuel to the, to the fire, language that I used when this was first brought up. And this is someone that I, and that I totally respect, and I respect Counselor Benkomo and all of her efforts in the community. I did receive three telephone calls from people who were opposed to it. And, and they, I mean, they called me. And, and they were very, and they were very reasonable. They weren't yelling. They weren't screaming. They weren't talking about, you know, they, and one woman said that she really voted sometimes Democrat, sometimes Republican. And, and she, she said that she didn't feel it was a partisan issue. I don't know if she listened to our meeting when we first discussed this. All that being said, I will be voting no on this, and not because I don't agree with some of the reasons, some of the reasons that Counselor Benkomo has raised and/or because of the manner in which this resolution is drafted. But I feel very strongly, very strongly, that, and I, and I, I'm not saying that I in any way condone what happened on January 6th and the manner that it was being, that it was done. They're probably going to assert freedom of speech and, you know, the Second Amendment, First Amendment as well. But a number of them have already been arrested. About 400 of them have been identified. And some have already been indicted, or maybe even arraigned by now in federal district court. There's an avenue for that. I think what happened was just abominable. But, you know, when you have people who feel very strongly about something, you will have that uprising, whether you agree with it or not. And I don't necessarily agree in the manner that it was done by any stretch. But I feel that from here, this resolution isn't going to go anywhere except to say that the city council, you know, if it passes, except to say that the actions of one person, Yvette Harrell, are to be condemned. But, you know, I, and yes, she represents all of us, but she's going to represent her point of view. We represent all the constituents, and I don't know how many of you, how many of my colleagues received telephone calls or spoke with people. The people that I spoke with were very respectful, very, very concerned about unity and concerned about keeping that unity at least in our community. And, and that's what I alluded to. I think that if we're going to be leaders in our municipality, in our city, I, I would just like to tell people to, to, there has to be unity. There has to be comprehension of everything and not be so reactionary, not get on a soapbox and, and, you know, start screaming or yelling right back. I think that this is a form of retribution. I don't agree with what Yvette Harrell did. I didn't vote for her. I would, I would never vote for someone who, who, you know, is associated with Griffin. And I'd never vote for Griffin if I lived in Otero County. But I, I think that these are personal things that we, as individuals, have to separate from a leadership position in the city. We, I know my district, for example, that the voting breakdown here is 50-50. 50 Republican, 50-50 Democrat. And even though Mr. Dunn has drafted this in a very beautifully, actually, in a very non-partisan manner, the issue is still very partisan. So insofar as how people are responding to it, well, no, that's not entirely true. I take that back because some of the Republican people who spoke with, with whom I've discussed this don't condone what happened on January 6th, 2021. So for those reasons, I will be voting no on this, and it's with a lot of respect for you, Counselor Benkomo. I think the work you do in our community for, for people to make this a better world is, is above reproach. But on this, I respectfully disagree, and thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Dunn, and thank you, Counselor Benkomo.
Okay, so it looks like Counselor Vazquez is ready to read some of those emails that he and I both received. So Counselor Vazquez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and read a few now, and then you have some comments to offer afterwards. This first one is from Mr. Joseph Foster. Mayor, I very much support the city council's resolution to condemn US Rep. Yvette Harrell's vote to reject the electoral votes to Arizona and Pennsylvania in the 2000 presidential election. Let's see here. We have one here, and we received several from out of the district, so I'm not going to read those just for our purposes here. This is from Sac Egan, Las Cruces resident. Hello, I wanted to voice my support in favor of the resolution to condemn Representative Yvette Harrell. Her actions since taking office have highlighted she's concerned about herself, holds a complete disregard for science and the US judicial process, who claims of upholding the Constitution in her vote, objecting to election certification, despite the fact that not a single court of law found constitutional violations, points to just how Representative Harrell has overstepped her position and infringed on the rights of voters outside of her own state. She also continues to perpetuate borderline conspiracy ideas and votes only in her own interest rather than the interests of her constituency. As a New Mexico representative, she should represent all of those within her district and not just those who voted for her. Okay, here is one from retired Lieutenant Colonel, Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, Dr. Elaine Foster. She says, I am a resident of Las Cruces, and I very much support the city's council resolution to condemn US Rep. Yvette Harrell's votes to reject the electoral votes of Arizona and Pennsylvania. Let's see here. Have one here from Dr. Elaine Struthers. She says, I support condemning Yvette Harrell by the Las Cruces City Council. I have already communicated my feelings to her office. We did not select Yvette Harrell from Southern Mexico to go to Washington DC and attempt to overthrow the will of voters in other states. Yvette Harrell herself tried to dis- In other states, Yvette Harrell herself tried to disenfranchise the voters of New Mexico by her actions in Washington, D.C. She can be said to be part of this seditionist attempt to overthrow the government of the United States of America. When it's even worse, says that as a representative, she tried to thwart the will of the state of New Mexico. Our state voted for President Biden, our state generally went blue, and the first act that this person committed was to ask to have the votes of other states thrown out. In addition to that, I don't think it's her business of how another state decides who, how they set the rules for their elections. Her business should be in New Mexico, and yet the first thing she did in Washington was try to thwart the electoral will of other states." I'll read one more here. This is from Mrs. Breeze, Mrs. Nancy Breeze. She says, "Dear, Dear Mayor, I'm writing to comment on Harrell's involvement with the Sedition Caucus. She has no business trying to disenfranchise certified voters from other states. She certainly had no business voting for the big lie after the horrible siege of the Capitol had occurred. Her lack of judgment is reprehensible." I think that was the only comment that pertains to this issue from her. She had some other comments on other things. So I'll just, I'll just say that, you know, I don't, it's not unusual for this body and this council to comment and to consider issues that are important, that are outside of the scope of our jurisdiction. As Councilor Flores mentioned, we do it often, especially at state and federal, state and federal issues that impact the city of Las Cruces. And so I see this resolution as not much different than other positions that we've taken because, overall, I think the things that happen outside of our city that contribute to the type of healthy community and the healthy society that we want to see built here, and the way we want our leaders to be represented, is, is part of our job as local leaders here and as representatives of our constituents. What happened on January 6th was something I never thought I'd see in my lifetime, to see essentially domestic armed white nationalist insurgents and part of a political movement that, that, you know, that not just vandalized, not just broke windows and, and tore up, you know, the people's house and even actually took property from Congress people's office, but caused the death of four people, including a Capitol Police officer, is, is not, is not something that I take lightly. It wasn't something that I turned, turned off the TV at night and said, "We're going to be okay tomorrow." It was something to me that's a pivotal moment, I think, in history, where, where really the, the actions of people will be judged on how they respond to, 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 to what happened because, but what happened is just, is, is completely reprehensible and not who we are as Americans. And so I see it as my duty to, to do my part, right, as a public official, to condemn this action because accountability, as Councilor Bencomo mentioned, is really an important part of this process. And so will our resolution today have a significant impact? I don't know. Hopefully, as the largest city in Congressional District Two in New Mexico, our vote today, if, if this does, if, if there is a majority vote here, sends a message that that's not what we want our congressional representative to focus on, that this is not who we are as Las Cruces and as Dania and County, how we want to be represented. And so that's part of my effort and part of the reason that I, I strongly support this is that public accountability is part of the political process. And when you open up yourself to run for public office or you take a position as important as a congressional representative, there will be scrutiny for the way that you vote. And if you mess up really bad, and in this case, Representative Harrell trying to disenfranchise the voters of two other states as one of her first act in Congress is something that I feel I have to stand up against. And so that's the reason why I think using this platform and having this discussion today and passing this resolution is a vitally important step to both holding accountability, but hopefully to see that for, for Congresswoman Yvette Harrell, to understand how, how Las Cruces feels and how their, their elected leaders feel, because we are elected by the people, just like she is. And so for that, I will be supporting this. I do hope that hopefully we don't continue to see the, the same baseless claw, uh, uh, baseless claims of election fraud in the future coming from many of the Republican members of Congress that have contributed to this hostile environment that really puts people's lives in danger, and, and that we make it easier for people to vote, and that especially during times of COVID, which is what these states were trying to do in the first place. You know, we, we absolutely have more work to do in that space. And in fact, I think Representative Harrell just co-sponsored a bill that would actually make it harder for people to vote nationally. That includes voter ID requirements. And so I think that's a step in the wrong direction. I don't think that's in line with what we want to see of a representative democracy. And so for that reason, I will support this. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Bencomo.
Thank you, Councilor. We have Councilor Sorg and then Abayta Stuvi. Councilor Sorg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start out by saying two things. I, I agree with Councilor Bencomo and Councilor Vazquez on, on the, they described the situation in our country here recently pretty well. I also got close to a half a dozen emails that in support of this resolution. I didn't get any that were against it. But I think back five years ago, when the election for 2016 was going, starting, I couldn't believe what was happening. The fact that Trump was getting, in the primaries, votes that would put him on the ballot for our president election was just unbelievable to me. I, my opinion, he is the worst president this country has ever had, no doubt in my mind, in so many different ways. I cannot stand somebody who stands in front of this people of the United States and continuously lies for his own purpose. And that goes, continues on right through last year's presidential election. As you know, he continually lied as to what the election results were and tried desperately to try to overturn the election in so many different ways. The last way, of course, was on January 6th. So, uh, the result that has been described by Councilor Vazquez especially is, is there. I, I think I've got a unique position on this council. I actually lived in a country that had its government overthrown in a coup. That was in 1972 in Ghana, when I was in the Peace Corps there. I know what a coup looks like. What I saw on January 6th was an attempted coup, no doubt in my mind. They tried to overthrow a legally elected government that we, as the people of the United States, did. So therefore, those people that do this, including Representative Yvette Harrell, that tried to, uh, uh, take and, and discount the votes of legally voting, voting states such as Pennsylvania and Arizona, and by doing so, if she did overthrow, she would illegally, illegally overthrow the votes of New Mexico and my vote too. So in my mind, people that do this must take responsibility for what they've done. And actions and words have consequences. And therefore, we're not going to have unity in this country unless these actions and words are held accountable. And so this is a small way that we, as a city and council, can say to those people that tried to do this, to overthrow our country, uh, country's legal election, that this is wrong. And so there, in fact, I was thinking, also, the other day, you know, when I read the resolution, I wouldn't mind having Trump's name added to this resolution too. It would be fitting. So therefore, you know how I'm going to vote on it. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Abayta Stuvi, and then Mayor Portem.
Thank you, Mayor. For me, our foundations of relationships with, with our neighbors, our friends, our family, or even with elective officials must be based on transparency and truth. And that, to me, is a neutral and nonpartisan issue. The judicial review process also helps with that, and that is why we have the separation of powers. With this election, there were many, many claims, many lawsuits, many reviews of that process, all that found that this was a fair and legal election. And that's why I am in support of this resolution, because the nonpartisan portion of our review process did show that the election was fair, was legal, and the actions of Congresswoman Yvette Harrell were in accordance to that truth. I did receive many emails as well, from Mr. John Hill, Sam S., Nancy Breeze, Lucas Herndon, Mike King, all in support of this, for me to support this action. I did receive one email from Mr. Patrick Gallagher that urged me to either abstain or vote no in the effort of unity. And for that, and that does seem to be one of the words of today is unity and moving forward. And how do we do that in a way that brings our community up together? Very hard processes. And for me, unity is a relationship. It is a trust, and you cannot have trust without truth. And you must work together for that, and you must recognize when there has been issues. And obviously, we saw some significant issues. This year has shown that most actions that we take, whether we think they're nonpartisan or not, end up being partisan. The fact of the matter, we have had debates, and I don't know how many times I have had to justify science with COVID and the real problems and realities that it brings, that has become science and health, public health, have become partisan issues. That is how we are divided, we are as a nation. And to get back, I think, for that unity, you have to establish some basic ground rules of truth of what's happening. And those are conversations that will take a long time, I do believe, but they can be started. This is us recognizing that there was problems, and then from there, there becomes a conversation. And I certainly hope, I would love to have a conversation with Congresswoman Harrell, to talk to her about the issues that we've seen in our community, and I hope that we can do that next and work towards those. So we recognized the problem, and we worked moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor, uh, Mayor Portem Ganda?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo a lot of what my colleagues have said, and, you know, Mayor, on January 11th, you asked for me to start the work session, and, you know, it was a few days after the, the violence that ensued on, on January 6th, and I felt it necessary, frankly, to put together a statement. And I'm going to read a little bit about, about what I said because you weren't there. And so I, before we stand for the pledge, I want to acknowledge the horrific act of violence in our nation's capital on January 6th. To say I was not surprised is an understatement. To know our president and some members of Congress incited the violence in the name of voter fraud is a breach to our democracy. These acts of violence should not be ignored. The council should take a stand denouncing the act of violence and call for the expulsion of these members of Congress and of the 45th President of the United States. And I went on to, to give condolences to the, the officers who lost their lives. And, and so, like everybody else, I, I understand about unity, for sure I do, but this, to see this unfold before our eyes, I never thought I would see the day. It was extremely unsettling to me, and I, I felt like the council should take a stand. And so like some of my other colleagues, I received several emails. They, one was from Esnavil, Abraham Sanchez, Frank Billion, Sam S., Carissa Guybon, Robert McNamara, and Nancy Breeze, all supporting us, this resolution and encouraging me to support it as well. Again, I, I appreciate my colleagues' comments and appreciate Councilor Bencomo bringing this forward, and I will be voting yes for this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so I think everybody's had their chance to say something. So let me just share something. You know how I always like to use little stories? Earl, you waving your hand? Uh, you're, you're muted. You want to unmute yourself? You're, you're still muted, Earl. Can't hear you. You, you have to unmute. I, I can, I know you sent an email in support of this resolution, but I can't hear you. You can unmute yourself, but, sorry. Okay. Well, let me get back to my, my little story here. So I think just, when, when Counselor Bencomo first brought this up, I told her, I said, "I didn't think I was going to be supporting this because of, you know, I didn't want to, I, I didn't feel that the city needed to do this in, because of, of, you know, I just, I just didn't. I, I thought that this was something here that I didn't want to condemn someone for how they voted. However..." Funny, interesting story. So this Saturday, you know, I'm, I'm a President Kennedy affectionate, and so they happen to have something Saturday morning, and, and I, I left my closed caption on because that's how I try to learn Spanish a little bit more. And, and so, so there, there, there they are. You know, they had these, these tapes of President Kennedy, and they were playing it, and, and they had President Johnson saying the oath of office. And, and it, you know, and they got to the point, and there it is, written, "You preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution." And I thought, you know what? We both took that oath. All of us, we took that. I, I, in fact, I even remember when someone asked me why I didn't go against the governor on her mask mandate, and I said, "Because I took an oath to uphold the state constitution. I can't do that. I mean, she's our leader. I got to do it." And I just realized something, and I, I think maybe I talked to Representative Harrell. So we both took this oath, Representative, to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution. You know, when you, when you voted against it, I don't think you did. I don't think you did preserve. I don't think you did protect it, and I don't think you defended the Constitution. And if I don't, and this is a complete change, I know, if I don't vote for this, then I'm not defending it either. So I have to. So hopefully, and I, I do have one result, one, one amendment I'd like to add, maybe Counselor Flores will join me. I wanted to add on paragraph three, and this is why I said, you know, Chris, you did a good job on this, on this resolution, because if you look at three, and I compared it to the first one, but if you look on paragraph three, it says, "Our elected federal representatives have sworn an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, consult enemies, foreign and domestic, which requires that they respect the roles of other branches of governments and autonomy of each state." And I wanted to put in there, "We believe your actions did not preserve, protect, or defend the Constitution." And then, and then it just goes on to the next paragraph. Now, I can't make a motion, but I would hope that someone would, would allow me to have this put in there, and I'd like to vote for that. Did you unmute yourself, Earl?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Why don't you just hit your name, please? And you're the, you're the first non-city council member to, to talk here, but since you've waited the whole meeting...
I've been, yeah, hanging out. Okay, so I will state publicly...
Excuse me, Earl, I need you to state your name.
Oh, Earl Nissen. I will publicly state that I am 89. So I, Calvin Coolidge was president when I was born. So I'd lived through a lot of elections, a lot of campaigns, done a lot of campaigning for people, including people sitting around here. And we all had to put our big boy pants on when Amanda Lopez certified our election showing Harrell won. I didn't hear any objections from her then, you know, when she was elected. And so what I'm, what I'm thinking of is when she stepped into the job description of a House of Representatives... of a House of Representatives member, I don't think she's met it. I mean, by doing what she did with the vote she gave to practically laying it in the hands of the insurrectionists and so on, with all of that miserable stuff. So I think she's stepped out of her job description of representing us, you know, for as people in Las Cruces and Donaiana County and the state and so on. So I think that the resolution that you have before you is absolutely in order. And Ken, what you added, I think, is great. I just had a pop-up on my phone that Yvette Harrell says she appeared on Fox News on Saturday, and she is opposing all of Joe Biden's executive orders. I mean, that's fair game, I guess, for her to say. You know, that's left and right, whatever you want to call it, Democrat, Republican viewpoint. But that's the beauty of our democratic system. But we want to protect that and not have our representatives stepping out, first of all, taking support from the Cowboys for Trump, which certainly was part of the insurrection. And that I'm going to help people remember in 2022 that she took that kind of support. That, to me, I don't care if I'm a Democrat or Republican, I would be incensed to think that this is our elected representative taking direct support from people who were trying to defeat the democratic system here. So I would absolutely ask and request as a citizen of Las Cruces that all of you support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nissen. Okay, Counselor Vazquez, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd actually just like to make the amendment at this time to add in the line that you requested.
Oh, great. Let me second it. I can't make a second, I can't make a motion.
Okay.
Did you make the motion yet, Counselor?
Yes, I so moved to include your amendment to add the line about Representative Harrell violating her oath to defend and protect.
Okay, so that is on paragraph three. And after, right before and, and after state, we add, "We believe your actions did not preserve, protect, or defend the Constitution." And then and, whereas, so I'll second that.
Well, I'll second, oh, I was going to second.
Good, good, I'm glad you're going to.
You twisted my arm.
Well, good, because you know what? Like I said, we're on the amendment here.
Yeah, actually, it was what really turned, put really, put this into perspective for me was what Counselor Beto Stupi said. Of course, everybody had words of wisdom, but it was what she said in your amendment.
So I'm chopped liver?
Yeah, always. Well, you're not steak and lobster all the time, so.
But really, you know, and you know what? I'll defend this because, and you know what, Dr. Nissen? Yeah, whatever she wants to vote against, that's her business. You know, but, yeah. She took that oath, we took that oath.
We took that oath.
And we have to defend. And this is not a partisan issue. This is defending the Constitution. You know, when I have challenges, you know, I'll read that Constitution. And it directs me how I'm supposed to, what I'm supposed to do.
Mr. Mayor, when you said defend the Constitution, did you say of the United States? Or did I not hear?
Well, see, because on that third paragraph, it says, you know, you swore an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies. I mean, I guess I could repeat it, but it's in the paragraph.
Oh, good, okay.
So motion made by Counselor Vazquez and second by myself. I can second motions, right, Christine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's right, Tom. Okay, so if there's no, this is on the amendment.
This is on the motion to amend Resolution 21-118 to add a sentence to paragraph three stating, "We believe your actions did not preserve, protect, or defend the Constitution." So Counselor Beto Stupi.
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez.
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo.
Yes.
Counselor Sorak.
Yes.
Counselor Flotus.
Yes.
Counselor Gondra.
Do you hear me? Yes, sorry, I'm having trouble. Computer and internet.
And Mayor.
Yes. Okay, now we're on the main, back to the main motion. Any other comments or questions? Or anybody else who snuck in on the meeting, not a counsel? Just kidding, Dr. Nissen. Okay, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 21-118 as amended. Counselor Beto Stupi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorak?
Yes.
Counselor Flotus?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you, Counselor Bencomo. Okay, so now we're going to go to board appointments. I'm going to need a motion in a second. First one is for the Macia Valley Public Housing Authority, City Commissioner Michael Murphy, new appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Flotus, second by Counselor Vazquez.
This is on the motion to appoint Michael Murphy to the Macia Valley Public Housing Authority. Counselor Beto Stupi?
No.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorak?
Yes.
Counselor Flotus?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
No.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, to the Americans with Disabilities Act Committee, Ron Winetsky, new appointment, need a motion, second.
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Flotus, second by Counselor Vazquez. Christine?
Mayor, I'm sorry, can you repeat the name? I didn't get that.
Ross Winetsky, W-I-N-E-T-S-K-Y. And motion made by Counselor.
Flotus.
Flotus, and then second by Counselor Vazquez.
This is on the motion to appoint Ross Winetsky to the ADA Committee. Counselor Beto Stupi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorak?
Yes.
Counselor Flotus?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, to the Thomas Bryanigan Memorial Library Advisory Board, Gene Berlowitz, need a motion, second, please.
So moved, by Flotus.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Flotus, second by Counselor Sorak. Christine?
This is on the motion to appoint Gene Berlowitz to the library board. Counselor Beto Stupi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorak?
Yes.
Counselor Flotus?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? That was the library board, Gene we just appointed. I was wondering why we had to vote on that library appointment and not the one for Jennifer up above there.
Oh, because you, as councilmembers, you get to appoint without a vote, and mine has to get a vote, because you guys are special.
Ah, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. So the next one, I have to say, takes, gets an A for the coolest name on the Transit Advisory Board, Mary Diesel. Motion and a second.
So moved, so moved, so moved.
Okay, I think I heard Counselor Vazquez, and then second by Counselor Sorak. Christine?
Before Christine goes, this was my appointee, though.
Oh, what? Oh, I don't know. Christine just sends me them, and so I just, it's now, it's 5:00 in the morning, so, you know, I'm kind of half asleep. But I don't know, Christine?
Actually, the Transit Board doesn't have district appointments, so I'm appointing her as the senior representative.
Okay, there you go, Counselor.
Okay, so this is on the motion to appoint Mary Diesel to the Transit Advisory Board. Counselor Beto Stupi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorak?
Yes.
Counselor Flotus?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, to the City Art Board, Katrina Chandler.
To approve.
Second, by Flotus.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Sorak, second by Counselor Flotus. Christine?
This is on the motion to appoint Katrina Chandler to the City Art Board. Counselor Beto Stupi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorak?
Yes.
Counselor Flotus?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, now we go to notice of proposed ordinances. There'll be no public discussion. Counselor may ask staff for clarification on the proposed ordinance, number 9.1, Council Bill Number 21-027, ordinance number 2960.
Bring it forward, man.
Item 9.2, Council Bill Number 21-028, ordinance number 2961.
Bring it forward.
And now we'll go to the City Council Member Board Reports and Comment. I actually have none, so I'll go to Mayor Portem.
Okay, thanks, Ma'am.
Oh, you.
I'm muted, yeah, thank you. I'll start with the more recent things. Mayor, on these appointments and applications specifically for, well, the Macia Valley Housing Authority, do we know what kind of process takes place in terms of vetting folks? And again, I'm doing a lot of this on the fly. I don't get these applications. We've asked for them before. Really concerned about that. And I wanted to ask for a little more detail as well. And I've been told for some time that there's been a vacancy for the city. Did this gentleman that got approved, did he fill that vacancy? Or how many vacancies specifically do we have? And I feel like we, I continue to feel there's a disconnect with that organization. And if we're approving things and not sure, I'd love to see sort of a more active role that council takes, or maybe an update of sorts in the form of a work session related to that.
Yeah, so thank you for that question. So basically, this appointment, okay, so we've had the, Macia Valley Public Housing Authority has five slots. Three have been filled, two have gone unfilled for probably close to two years. I've had maybe two other individuals, but at the last minute, they just choose not to move forward. I personally contacted Michael Murphy and asked him if he'd consider. He graciously said yes. I talked with the director, Juan Olveta. You know, he, of course, sees his application. He was fine with him. So I guess, I don't know how, I don't want to, I guess Christine can probably send the applications to the entire council. I don't know if she does or not. I mean, I know she sends them to me to, because they're usually my appointments with you all's concurrence. So again, that's something there that perhaps, I don't know, maybe she can speak on that. I don't know if you, so you don't get the applications at all? You don't know what the?
Okay.
Early on in my, when I first got elected, we used to get those. Now, I don't. And really, that application is like a one-pager. It's not really, doesn't give a lot of information. And I'd like to see the resume, in my opinion, but I don't know what council fills.
Yeah, no, let me ask Jennifer or Christine. I don't think that wouldn't violate the Open Meetings Act. I don't see why we couldn't, why they couldn't send the whole council as a whole. May not be a bad idea. Christine or Jennifer?
Mayor and council, this is Jennifer Vega Brown. Sorry, Christine, I didn't mean to catch your eye. You can receive what's in the packet if they're a matter of public record.
Okay. So I guess, Christine, if you, you know, and I don't mind, and it actually makes it better so that the council knows who, but, oh, but I can't respond back to them, I guess, you know? So I guess if you just send it out that these are the applicants and go from there. But, yeah, I've been trying to fill that housing authority board. So we still have one more. If you have, if you know someone, let me know. But I've put it different places and tried to get.
Mayor, I'm working on a couple. I'm working, I thought there were two, and so I was working on a couple of people. So I'd like, I'll gently nudge this person to see, if interested to apply. Okay, cool, thank you, Mayor. And let's see. I have a list. Friday, the resilience leaders met for their strategic planning mission. It was really successful. We had about 73 people register. And at one point, we had 59 people, and kept it around 53, 54 people throughout the three-hour process. It was time to plan for the next one to two years. And if people aren't familiar, resilience leaders, Donaiana County Resilience Leaders is the cross-sector group that I formed related to combating childhood experiences. And so it was really exciting to see the number of people participate, the energy in the room. Each of the sectors, from survival to thriving services, has data, right, from our survey that we conducted last year, probably a year and a half, is, you know, looking at and utilizing that to build some strategies to combat things like reducing poverty, unemployment, increasing food security, reducing homelessness. And so really excited about what's happening with that group. It's one of five collective impact models in our county. And I'd like Mayor to announce that there is a Senate bill, Senate Bill 30, a $6 million appropriation to continue its efforts, to continue the Anna Age Aid. And it was an appropriation that was given a year or so ago to form the Anna Age Aid Institute. And this $6 million appropriation will help the eight or nine counties that are already doing some work and scaling it out to the rest of the counties to form sort of this collaborative network of folks. So wanted to say that. And I wanted to bring up, Mayor, again, the issue surrounding. um, I wanted to bring up, mayor, again, um, the issue um, surrounding um, the the particular alleyways in my area that no, are no longer um, being managed by the city. That has been a change in the last eight or so months, maybe a little over a year. I've still haven't been able to really get an answer. Um, I know EFO has been working on it. And at my um, district meeting, um, specifically on Thursday, we talked about that. And so people are seeing um, illegal dumping happening in some of our, our more impoverished areas. Um, the the particular um, alleyway that I'm talking about is adjacent to um, our Housing Authority, Section Eight, Tres Alveles, and right, um, um, excuse me, west of my house there. And um, and so I'm gonna build a group of people that is going to really start pressuring the city to talk specifically about why we're not um, we're not um, in partnership with community, right? If 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 we're there, the city's no longer doing it. We'd like to be in partnership as as a neighborhood to understand why and then what our role and responsibility is going to be, because someone has to clean it up. And um, I have to say publicly that I appreciate, when I'd have brought it up, that that one portion um, that's uh, adjacent to the Section Eight housing has been cleaned up. Um, and and so I I I really would like an answer about who decided administratively for this to take place. And I asked um, um, you know, Sonne Delgao, and it was before her time. Um, but it it's just unusual for me, because that has always been an alleyway that has been maintained by the city. Um, and so again, I'm just bringing that up, because I would like to know um, why that decision was made. And if we can unmake the decision, I'd like to see that um, those alleyways cleaned up. And this isn't the only one. There are others in our districts that have, see these signs pop up with no discussion um, with council and decisions just being made administratively that affect our district. Um, and so again, um, also very concerned about the streets in my district, specifically in that area. Uh, Calle Sosa, um, it it, uh, and it happens to be the street that gets us to um, Tres Alveles is in very, very poor condition. Sacramento is another one. The other side of Popular is another. There's just so many, and I, the list can, is on and and I'm really good about emailing um, Public Works and staff about where we at with these things. And that is, again, one of my priorities is increasing the funding for infrastructure so that we um, can help, um, we can ensure that our folks, our folks in the most impoverished communities in our districts are are, have good streets, good infrastructure, good sidewalks, um, those kinds of things. So I'd really like to um, continue to talk, and I and I want to say thank you. I don't, I don't mean to sound over critical. Um, staff is gracious. They have all participated in my evening meetings. Um, they gave, they gave such good direction and input. Um, and 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 so I know I sound ungracious. Is that a word? Um, and I I don't mean to be. I I'm just um, really sort of at my wit's end. You you really see how terrible these areas are looking. And it's always the the people in impoverished communities that, or many times in impoverished communities that get, get the bad end of the the deal. So um, again, I I want to organize that area, and we've had some discussions about creating Neighborhood Watch and associations. Um, um, I think that Section Eight is very amenable to working together. I'd like to see us, um, you know, plant some trees and increase the, you beautify the grounds and really in those areas related to that alleyway. Um, and uh, I I don't know what else needs to happen, uh, maybe some art. I mentioned a small pocket park, but they, staff indicated there's power lines um, in in those areas that they would recommend not having something like that happen. So I'm really gonna be pushing this, um, especially in my area. As you know, I live a couple of streets away from the area in question. Um, and and so I want to just continue to, to state that. And then, mayor, we talked about this in the whole session, and I really want to um, bring up um, rules of procedure for council, really, really developing um, those um, specific to possibly having a work session to discuss sort of administratively, um, what council is responsible for. Um, looking at the ordinance and really just drilling down what our role and responsibilities are and and really discussing rules um, so that we're all familiar and understand what what we need to do when certain things happen. Um, and 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 um, more specifically, um, and I appreciate Councilor Flores um, pointing this out to us. Um, I I believe on page twelve, um, there is a lot of discussion about general provisions administratively that the council is responsible for, particularly Section four point oh-two, our personnel system, what we're, what we're responsible in informing. And and one of the bigger things is how we address citizen complaints, that coming from the um, the hotline and and if, um, specific to um, it coming directly to council or to you, mayor. Thank you.
Oh, I think that's uh, good. Well, we can have a work session on that. Uh, Mayor Potem, I'm trying to figure out what alley you're talking about. I I think I saw, I think I see something between Wade Street and Calle Fielder Court. There's like, it it appears the, like, uh, it's just a dirt.
Yes, very sandy. That, there's one there.
Is that what you're referring to?
That's one of them, and then the other one is off of Juniper. In the twelve hundred block, mayor, to, if you're traveling west, it's to the left. It's just a few houses up from my house.
Okay, I'll I'll look at that. I'm, I'll try to figure out who owns that. Um, it's very possible that it could be an easement by, owned by somebody else. I don't know if it's, it it, you know, it's very possible, like you said, it, the city used to take care of it, and then all of a sudden, they didn't. Maybe they found out that um, it's it's private property, which we're not supposed to be, you know, so.
Sure.
And or um, you know, they haven't dedicated the easements to the city, so that's probably the reason why, but I don't know. Uh, so maybe I'll try to find it by the time we get to Councilor Beta Stewie.
I understand that it is, that I think there was some discussion that they thought it was private property, but I I'm not familiar. My, my concern, mayor, is just the communication. It's like literally from one day to the next, the sign pops up. And none of us in our areas were even alerted to it. So it's like the parkways. People think that it's the city's responsibility, and the parkway is the constituent's responsibility, right? It it's like, if you're gonna make decisions like that, it should be in partnership with community. And I felt like it was a decision that was made in the dark, and and I don't, I I don't like that. I think we've all been very clear that we want to coordinate and collaborate and communicate effectively with our constituency to include staff. I I I, it's mind-boggling to me that it happened that way, and now I'm seeing the repercussions. So like, you know, I'd love to go out there and clean it, but I'm not gonna do that by myself. And um, um, I I I just feel like it needed to be done in partnership with community.
Yeah.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, um, Councilor Flotus?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I would, um, first of all, um, I, this weekend, in anticipation of our meeting and that resolution on um, on the Congresswoman's behavior or whatever, um, you know, I I look for poems dealing with, um, you know, I was reading this social contract. I was reading love poems by Pablo Neruda. And I was just trying to get something, because I think at this point in my life, um, I I just, I just feel like, um, I just want to see unity. And I I want to see people um, working for love. And I think that there was a candidate, um, Mary Ann Williamson or something. I think she wrote the uh, book on miracles or something. At any rate, uh, she writes, uh, she, very inspirational stuff, but I couldn't find anything that really fit. Um, but I I'm happy that we, I really thank uh, Councilor Benkomo for bringing that and uh, Mr. Dunn for uh, drafting it beautifully, and for you, mayor, for adding that language. Um, and um, and I do hope that we move uh, forward uh, in in unity and really listening to each other and not just going by a certain party line or a certain, you know, political concept, but just think about people and um, who we really are as as a world. Um, I have my my reports um, on the um, I am the um, council liaison to the uh, City Art Board, and Ceci Vasconcelos is now with uh, Quality of Life. So she's now the um, she is now the um, uh, liaison, the city liaison to the C A B. Uh, the City Art Board, um, as you know, as I've communicated or tried to communicate uh, prior um, previously, is that it actually works on getting a lot of of public artwork. It isn't just, um, not to minimize um, the beauty and the need for more murals, but it's just so extensive. And they are involved in uh, creating the artwork or, you know, doing a cafe call to get the um, get artists to apply for the artwork that will be going up um, at the fire station, the new fire station, and um, the one that's also going up for the um, the uh, Animal Services Center in Mesia Valley. And uh, it's a very interesting, very interesting uh, board. And um, I think we're fortunate to have Ceci uh, working with with that board. Um, the other uh, board meeting was the the Animal Services Center in Mesia Valley. Uh, the audit findings came back. Um, they they were good. Um, there was one finding last year, I believe, and it's been corrected. Um, and so um, and there was discussion about fire station, uh, uh, the new station there too regarding um, you know, how it's coming along. And um, I, and I think it's targeted to be completed by late twenty twenty-two. Um, and we also discussed, uh, we, it was a long, long meeting. I think we went from nine o'clock to about one o'clock in the afternoon. And um, anyway, um, there's a new ordinance. There's been, uh, it's a draft of a proposed ordinance. And um, things just fell by the wayside. It was a product that came out of the Animal, um, Animal Ordinance Task Force. But we never really looked at the, at the, the last um, final, or the, not the final, but the last draft. So um, what we did was we called for the task force coming, uh, the Animal um, Ordinance Task Force to come um, together, and I believe uh, Mr. Enrique said that we could probably have it as soon as uh, this coming Friday, and we would always meet late afternoon. Um, there are a lot of issues there with um, especially cats, the feral cats, the colonies. Um, and not necessarily ferals, because ferals, by the way, are the, um, you know, the wild cats, the cat, the real, I think, not just nuisance, but um, there has to be other things. But anyway, so feral cats are usually, if they're picked up by Animal Serv- uh, Services, by ACOs, Animal um, uh, officers, they um, they will um, put them, you know, they would put them to sleep. They're they're euthanized, if they're wild cats. Um, so anyway, um, it was a very good meeting, um, very long, and very good, very fruitful. Uh, the other board meeting I I'd like to report on is the South Central Rapid Transit District. And uh, Gil, you'll be very happy to know that David Admijo, who's the executive director, and of course, all the efforts in the past by, of course, Sharon Thomas, um, they've managed to, uh, there's a couple already running, and uh, they're beautiful. Um, and um, A A R P uh, was also very helpful in getting a parking renovation um, in um, at the Anthony facility. And um, so they broke ground on November thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty, and the parking lot now is complete, and it's also ADA compliant. And A A R P um, actually partnered and was able to um, was able to um, contribute uh, money for that. There's also um, an infrastructure capital improvement project, uh, ninety thousand dollars will be asked of the legislature to contribute to expanding service and every, and and other buses and whatnot. Um, also, the fiscal, again, uh, the audit, the audit was completed on time, and it was submitted. Um, and uh, we have a a new member on our board. Uh, it's Diana Trujillo, Murillo hyphen Trujillo, who was um, elected to the commission, uh, Dona County Commission. So she's serving um, on the board as a commissioner. Um, and I believe, well, I don't know about that. Um, at any rate, um, A E is also with A T D to get parking uh, facilities, partnering uh, facilities, uh, partnering in getting parking facilities in Chaparral and Anthony. Um, so that um, is wonderful. And um, and thank you, um, uh, Mayor Potem, Gondola, for bringing up um, the need to have a work session. Um, this did grow out of our closed session without discussing anything about that. Um, we really need a work session, perhaps led by um, Jennifer, our our attorney, Jennifer Vega Brown. Uh, to, um, because there is, um, the the, there are two things that the mayor taught me shortly after, or maybe when I was campaigning, but shortly after I was elected. He said, there are two things you stay away from, procurement and personnel matters. So it turns out, um, he he wasn't quite right about that, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor. Um, because we are mandated by our city charter um, to um, well, we're mandated to definitely keep an eye on certain personnel issues. Um, so I I request hereby, Mr. Mayor, that we have a a work session on that. Um, we, yeah, we have to have an open meeting on that, or however it is appropriate. Uh, we really need to um, go over what our, what our mandate is as as the City Council. So um, all that, I think that's the end of my, those are the end of my comments. And love and peace to everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, counselor. And yeah, no, we can have a work session on it, and and you'll find that. And I probably had a little bit of an advantage over you, but you'll find that that, what they're talking about in the charter is a little bit different uh, than what you're, what I was referring to. When I say stay away from personnel is, you know, getting.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and uh.
Yeah, no, no, I totally, no, 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 no. I I totally understand. I'm just kinda, you you had, it looked like you were doing something else. It looks like you were digging into your dinner, and you weren't listening to me, so I think.
No, I was, I I was sending the assessor and the clerk, and I copied Mayor Potem and EFO and Davis Edio. I, it's amazing, that piece of property, um, the the county has a, has a site that when you click on it, it tells you who the owner is. But that one, it will not say nothing. I checked on next, right, immediately next to it is owned by the Housing Authority. And the other one, of course, private property, but that one just goes blank. So I just circled it, sent it to the uh, assessor, see if her G I S team, and the clerk can tell us who owns it. So it's a mystery. Wow, you might be able to, that's interesting.
Well, maybe you can do a, uh, what? Well, maybe you can do a, what is it? What's it called?
Quiet title.
Yeah, quiet title, do an adverse possession on it and I might have to wait a few years for it to clear.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, Counselor Sorg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing I wanted to bring up, concerns and email that I got from Mr. Dean Peterson this weekend concerning the Department of Health website dashboard, which shows the percentage of vaccinations across the state by county. I forwarded it on to you, Mayor, and the rest of the council, as well as Mr. Efo and Assistant City Manager Eric Enrique. It shows that, and I took the, I went ahead and checked the website again just now, the dashboard for the Health Department, and they show the numbers now as being Santa Fe 24.1% or you can just say 24.1 per hundred people have gotten vaccinations in Santa Fe County. And then in Burnaleo County, it shows 16.2% or 16.2 per hundred people in Burnaleo County that have gotten vaccinations for the COVID-19. I hope I made that clear. And then us down here in Doñana County, we're only at 9.1% or per 9.1 per hundred getting vaccinations. That seems entirely unfair to me. It certainly did to Mr. Peterson when he emailed his letter. So I would like to have somebody who has the ability to find out what's going on with our distribution of vaccines in the state of New Mexico and see if we can't get a little more fairness here. It sure looks like an inequity situation to me. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. If anybody has information on that in their report today or in the future, I would appreciate learning about it. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yeah. I just texted the governor asking her, I told her that you're really upset and so.
Yeah, okay.
No, really? No, you, you know, Santa Fe is about the same size as us.
Doesn't matter.
No, I said, I said, why are they at 24% and Las Cruces at 9%? It's, you know, because our, the task force, they're getting, I mean, the, they're getting the vaccinations out as soon as we get them. We're just not getting them. So.
Yeah, right. In fact, you know, Santa Fe has more money than Doñana County.
Well, yeah.
Still, inequity, 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 over and again. So, and I was going to say something else too. Oh, yeah, the governor has an online survey on what people want to do in the, for her, to guide her in the election, or in the legislature. And there's a place there to comment. And I did a comment about this particular thing.
Very good. Is that it?
Yes, sir. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Bencomo?
Thanks, Mayor. I totally agree with you, Counselor Sorg. I actually got invited to participate on a panel with the Department of Health alongside someone who works with imprisoned populations. I got invited to talk about my experience with border communities as it relates to the vaccine. And so, I mean, if those numbers are bad for Las Cruces, I can't even imagine what they look like for Deming or Roswell or Lordsburg, right? And so I'm excited to participate in that for sure.
You're exactly right. They have those numbers there, right in the list, all the counties. Good.
I'll go check them out for sure. Thank you, Counselor. Couple of quick things. Actually, I wanted to just say something to Counselor Lourdes because I love Pablo Neruda. In fact, I went on a solo trip to Chile several years ago because I'm very drawn to that country. And actually, Pablo Neruda, before his death, planned to live in exile from the government of Chile after it was overthrown in a coup because he spoke very much against all of that. And so his, absolutely, his love poems are what made him, love him, but it really solidified when he was outspoken against a pretty terrible government. So I love that you brought him up. Anyway, that was not part of my council comments. I did want to note that, I wanted to bring up again, actually, now that Dr. Neeson is here, the issue of public engagement and the way we invite people to participate in our meetings. Since the legislative session has started, I've been in my other job in my other world, I've been participating in a lot of committee meetings and they've been able to bring in people for public comment pretty seamlessly. I wouldn't say seamlessly, it's been somewhat complicated, but they're providing interpretation. People are able to speak to legislators directly. You can't see people. It's still like in a webinar format. And so we as a panel could see them, but they're still in Zoom webinar. So I think there are layers of security there. But I just wanted to note that because the state legislature has been able to allow for public comment. And so if they have, I certainly think we can as well. I don't know about you all, but I deeply miss people. And so I would really like us and encourage us to think about that again, as opposed to just emails for public comment. So I'll just leave that there. And then I adopted a little dog from the animal service shelter of Mesia Valley back in July, absolutely improved my quality of life significantly. However, when I got him, the shelter was not doing spade and neuter surgeries because of COVID restrictions. But they're doing them again. I don't know how, when they started, but I took my little pup, he got fixed. And so I just wanted to let folks out there know that, to call and make an appointment for that. It's very important that you do that and they are doing, the shelter is doing it again. And it was like $25. So people should definitely call them to schedule an appointment. And then lastly, I was invited to share information about the, from the Hispanic Scholarship Fund, from a dear friend and mentor of mine, Dr. Tony Marine, regarding an event being hosted by the Hispanic Scholarship Fund in partnership with New Mexico State University and the Bridge of Southern New Mexico. They're hosting a virtual College 101 workshop available for free for middle schoolers, high schoolers and families on Wednesday, February 24th at 5:00 PM. It'll be bilingual, English, Spanish, and they'll be discussing sort of all the various steps families need to take to plan for that college education. So happy to support those efforts for sure from Hispanic Scholarship Fund. And actually, last thing I'll say, I wasn't sure if I was going to say it or what, but I think it's important that people know and are aware of this. And I think it's important for me to name these things publicly through this platform. I just read about a pretty devastating story. A woman named Rosa from El Paso, who was a victim of the shooting a couple of years ago, the largest single attack against Latinos in our country, was stopped after a traffic violation and was, she was deported. She was sent to ICE and then consequently deported. So a victim of the El Paso shooting, who happened to be undocumented, was deported on Friday. And I just want to lift up that as leaders in a border community, how incredibly critical it is that we speak out against policies that harm the very people that live here, our neighbors, and against the cruelty of agencies like ICE and Border Patrol, because that is one of the most shameful things I've heard. And we should speak out against them whenever we can. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Vazquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I actually, according, in accordance with our last meeting, I wanted to bring up three different resolutions of support for consideration by the city council. And we decided this was probably the best time and best format to do it, considering the short turnaround and not being able to get these on a work session. And so the three pieces of state legislation that I believe Mr. Christopher Dunn will give just very quick presentations on includes the Working Families Tax Credit, statewide paid sick leave bill, and the low income comprehensive tax rebate bill. I think my goal here is to, again, get just a very short briefing from Mr. Dunn for the rest of the council. And if I can get consensus from the council to have these resolutions come before us for an up or down vote in the next regular city council meeting, that's what I'd like to do. So if that sounds okay, Mayor, I can get Mr. Dunn to go ahead and present.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Vazquez. Let me pull up my screen
I'm going to drop off a webcam. I gotta go, I gotta drop off these certificates here. So I'm gonna drop off a webcam there, Christopher.
You just can't wait to see me, huh, Mayor?
I know you're, I know you're like 14 years old, right? Like that Seinfeld commercial, like Seinfeld episode.
You know, it's, I guess we're just gonna have to wait and see, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, my gosh, get him a camera for goodness sake.
All right. Well, again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. And thank you, Counselor Vazquez, for the introduction. So I'll briefly review the different legislative policies that Counselor Vazquez introduced. The first I'm going to discuss right now is paid sick leave. There's actually two bills before the legislature in this session supporting the paid sick leave. House Bill 20, titled the Healthy Workplaces Act, and House Bill 37, the Paid Sick Leave Act. There are some differences between these two bills, but a lot of the content is very similar between them and they have the same primary goals within them. So I'm going to overview those here. Both of these bills would require New Mexico businesses to offer paid sick leave for all of their employees. Employees under these bills would accrue one hour of paid sick leave per every 30 hours worked. The employees could use their paid sick leave for attending to their own medical needs, for attending to the medical needs of family members, for absence during public health emergencies, or to deal with situations concerning domestic abuse. And according to a review by the New Mexico Voices for Children organization, if implemented, a bill like one of these could cost businesses that don't currently have paid sick leave policies in place around $239 million annually for those businesses. The next policy I'm going to briefly discuss is the Working Families Tax Credit. The Working Families Tax Credit is the state version in New Mexico of the federal earned income tax credit. Both of these credits reduce personal income tax liabilities for low income tax filers. Eligibility for the Working Families Tax Credit is largely determined by the filer's income level, their marital status, and the number of dependent children that they have. The Working Families Tax Credit is refundable, meaning that any surplus value can be returned to the filer if the tax filer does not owe money because of an income tax liability with the state. The value of this credit is equal to 17% of the earned income tax credit for a filer with three children, which would be one that would qualify for the most potential value from this credit. That could lead to a maximum value of $1,132. In review of a previous increase to the Working Families Tax Credit that was conducted by the Legislative Finance Committee, under House Bill 6 in 2019, the Working Families Tax Credit was increased from 10% to 17%. The Legislative Finance Committee in that review did find that such an increase would result in some losses to the general fund. However, in that particular instance, under House Bill 6, there were other increases to other taxes and the introduction of other taxes that actually offset the losses in that particular instance. And the Legislative Finance Committee estimates the annual cost of the Working Families Tax Credit is roughly $91.5 million in state tax revenues. Finally, I'll briefly discuss the low income comprehensive tax rebate. This rebate provides a rebate for New Mexicans with, New Mexico residents with an income level of less than $22,000 annually. The value of this rebate ranges from $10 to $450, depending on the filer's taxable income and any exemptions that they might have. Similar to the Working Families Tax Credit, this credit, or this rebate is also refundable, meaning again, that any surplus value can be returned to the tax filer if that filer doesn't owe money because of the income tax liability with the state. We do have a bill before the legislature in this session. It's House Bill 42. It's simply titled, "The Low Income Comprehensive Tax Rebate Changes." This would increase the value of this rebate to a range of $15 to $730, again, depending on your taxable income and exemptions. House Bill 42 would also increase the maximum income level to be eligible for this rebate from $22,000 to $36,000. Similarly, the Legislative Finance Committee has also reviewed the low income tax rebate and has identified that's one of New Mexico's top 10 state tax expenditures with an estimated annual cost of $19.4 million. With that brief review, I will return the discussion to council and to you, Mayor. I can stand available to answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, no, well, thank you, Christopher. No, we can't really have any discussion. Let me just ask, if there's four hands that say no, if I don't see them, then we'll put them on the agenda. Okay, all right. So we'll put them all on. You done, Counselor Vazquez?
I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Brest, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have quite a few things to discuss, but I do want to take a moment first just to express my condolences to Lieutenant Edward Vazquez of the NASA White Sands Test Facility Fire Department. Mr. Vazquez was 35 and he has tragically died from complications of COVID-19. So I just wanted to take a moment to express those condolences to his family. We had a Quality of Life P R C last week. We were able to meet our new art director, Sessi, and also look at some of the data from the mask up events that happened in five different districts. We had different volunteers, lots of help, and a special thank you to our Parks and Rec. And we were able to distribute over 7,000 masks, 500 sanitation kits, and over 1,000 constituents. And so I really appreciate all the work of the staff for doing that. Also, my fellow counselors who attended those events to help distribute to the community. We also had a great discussion on indigenous cultural significance at our parks and ways to make sure that we're being inclusive of that story and history as well. Thank you, Counselor Sorg, for bringing up the issue on equity with our vaccinations. That is something that is very concerning with those basic numbers. I do want to point out, and I had him sent to me, so Mayor, I can send it to you as well, Commissioner, and I'm just bringing it up here, Commissioner Chairman Manny Sanchez has also written to Secretary Collins and Secretary Scrazy about this issues and asking what's driving those lower vaccination rates in the county and what type of resource constraints that there might be. This is one item that we're going to be looking into our vaccine, vaccine task force that we made here at the city. We'll start on Wednesday at 3:00 PM within our Health P R C. And that is one of the items that we're going to be looking at. We're going to have an introduction of all the community members, some education, and looking at those resources on what those constraints are. Is it funding? Is it obviously staff and manpower? Is it the refrigeration units for the vaccine? So we're going to be identifying those resources and seeing what next steps we need to do so that we're able to advocate appropriately and with great strength. I know I have critiqued a bit of the resources that we were given for testing when COVID came down and perhaps inequities. I am still concerned, especially given these numbers, that we're having the same issue happen here. And I want to make sure that we are using all the tools that we have available and all the community support to make sure that we are getting equitable chances for that vaccine scene for our community members. And then looking at different ways that we might move forward to hit special populations and if that's where we need to request from the state to doing mobile clinics and items like that. I know that our Department of Health here, they are very hardworking. They have a lot of tasks that they are having to do right now. And so I want to make sure that we're able to assist them as appropriate as possible and then urge our council, hopefully, to also write in to this governor and the secretaries to advocate for higher percentages of vaccine to come down here in an equitable manner. And I think that is it for today. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beta Stube. Thank you, Counselor Beta Stuvi. Thank you.
All right. So now we'll go to the city manager's report.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, first, first items that I wanna bring up is just recap from, from our previous council meeting, just reporting back with some of the items. Uh, as I mentioned before, there'll be some, some on this list that we've already followed up, and so I'll just so that we, for the sake of time. But I'll just run through the list on some of the items that we, we discussed and where we're at. Uh, there were requests for additional research for early childhood education in the state bank, and I think the information's been provided to council. Uh, there were COVID-related questions requested, uh, addressed through, addressed by Eric through discussions and meetings. This also includes housing eviction, evictions. That's under assessment right now. Uh, and then the follow-up bond going for specific items in the council request list. There were bollards and UTV, uh, discussion, uh, bollards for, uh, UTV traffic discussed, and the city is assessing and is working with IWBC for jurisdiction. Uh, that's, that's the area that we're looking at putting these bollards. Uh, there's a request for an update on Police Auditor Report. I think we gave the update, but that'll be, resolutions are in iCompass for February fifteenth council meeting. And that wa, was awarded to OIR Group at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand, uh, year-to-year contract, uh, with an option to renew annual for four years. And then, uh, it was also requested RFPs and grants access on city website get easier access. And so we're looking at technology to help with this, still in process, uh, but should be able to use added modules that will enable easier access to the public. And so, so that will remain on the list. Uh, there was a work session request for bike and pedestrian safety. Uh, and that's scheduled for June twenty-eighth. And then there is a request for news release, uh, issued regarding the city's support of banks offering lines of credit. Um, so that was, I, I believe, um, that, that was on the action list and, and being worked on by our Community Development Department. So those are some of the, the items that were, were there. As I mentioned before, we'll keep notes of everything that's been requested. There's some things that's been requested today that I've made known on, but like I said, for sake of time, we'll, we'll report and keep to the system that we have. Uh, the other, the other item on sort of like my organized, uh, report now would always be, uh, COVID update, but we've talked a lot about it. The biggest issue right now is the equity issue with our vaccines and, and, uh, so we've been on it. Uh, Eric is, is in contact with DO, uh, DOH. And I believe the first, as mentioned by Counselor Beto Stuvi, the first meeting is this Wednesday. Um, and that's number one on the agenda there, to push DOH. And just so everyone's clear about that, uh, we have the capability to, to double, triple, uh, vaccines. So we, with the task force put in place, uh, and the resources that we have, the convention center, our partnerships that we've made through this process the mayor brought up, uh, we, we have the capability. So it's not, it's not about our capability to, to distribute, uh, on our end. Uh, so the more we get, the more we can, can give. And so that, that message needs to, to be loud and clear to, to MDOH on that. But, uh, we're, we're, we're prepared. We're prepared to, to administer as many vaccines as we can get. So that push is there. Um, we're, we're kinda working through that right now. Uh, there is, there seems to be that, that inequity there. And so, but we're, we're on it. Um, I believe it was mentioned, we do have seven, over seventeen thousand vaccinations, but that only represents, uh, seven, I, I think, Counselor Sorg, you mentioned nine percent. I, I thought it was seven point nine percent. Um, but that's where we are with, uh, not, not very, uh, happy about that update with COVID. But, um, the other thing we do wanna push is vaccinations, uh, the vaccine N M dot org, that link, uh, to make sure that we push that link out to the community. That's another thing we don't want to, uh, as an excuse that we don't have enough registrants on there. And so we wanna keep pushing that out, that everybody, the community, the staff, everybody's registering because we can register, even if we're not in that, uh, you know, in those tiers right now. But we can make sure that, uh, community, community, uh, Communications Department will be working on pushing that registration out along with our campaign. So that's not, that won't be a hindrance to getting us more vaccines. But that's all I, that's all I have, uh, Mayor and Council to report. Uh, like I said, well, I appreciate, uh, Jamie and our team keeping track, and we'll continue to give updates and give you updates, whether it's in this meeting or if they're individual requests from, from specific counselors, we will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Efo. Yeah, yes, uh, Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I just, I forgot. Two items that I, very quickly, I wanna just say. Um, I just want counsel to know that you, myself, and Efo met about the Be, Behavioral Health District. Um, good meeting. Um, we are, we each have our marching orders in terms of what we need to be getting to formulate possible JP, uh, JPA. Um, once we do that, we will, uh, more than likely, schedule a meeting to meet with all of the mayors and representatives of, uh, um, um, within the county. And, um, we're thinking probably March is probably the, the earliest that we can do that. So just wanted to say that. And then I wanna wish my, my baby, my baby girl, Elena, a happy birthday. It's her twenty-ninth birthday. And usually I make big dills about birthdays, and I visit, and I'm unable to do so. So I just sending good thoughts her way.
Okay, great. Well, happy birthday, Elena.
Thanks, Mayor.
So, yeah, so, uh, Efo, um, you're getting introduced to, there's a, there's a community, uh, right before you get to Albuquerque, well, two of them, Los Lunas and then Belen. I think Belen's first and then Los Lunas. Uh, basically, south of Belen, we get ignored. So that's, uh, that's usually how it goes. Albuquerque, Santa Fe, they, that upper region, north of Belen, uh, is usually, you know, taken care of. So we need, that's why we need to elect like a governor from down here, you know, or somebody.
Don't let it happen. Jockey into position.
What you asked for. We already had that. Now is a major disaster.
Oh, that's right, huh?
Jockey into position, Efo. I know, 'cause I've, I've had to do it from a state's perspective. You just start put, you know, pushing your weight around and, and a nice and thoughtful, the way you are. But people need, we need to be recognized, and I think we've done a lot of that, Mayor, pushing.
No, no, yeah, that's a good idea. Why don't you and Icani go with some dark glasses and big overcoat, legislature, and kinda scare them?
I, I was gonna ask it, how to do that. Do you want, is a good way or finesse? I, I don't know which, which way to go.
Yeah. In fact, just, 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 just don't say nothing. Just, uh.
Just show up with the dark glasses and trench coats.
Well, that'd be a pretty intimidating, uh, thing. I, I haven't met Icani, but I hear he's, what, six-four? So. I'll tell you, uh, uh, ACM Enriquez. I guess he took off.
Yeah, no, I'm here. I'm, I'm five-ten.
Okay, well.
Can't measure up to those two. But, but I'll go support. I'll, I'll, I'll go with them.
Good, good. All right. Sounds good. Looks like you've got a plan there, so. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Motion made by Counselor Florida, second by Counselor Sorg, that we adjourn. Uh, you wanna call the vote, Christine?
Yes, sir. Yes. This is on the motion to adjourn the regular meeting. Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Colwell?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Ganderda?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, we're adjourned. It's five twenty-four P.M. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Efo.